Okay, tonight is November 20th, 2014. This is the Hyde Park School District Board of Education meeting held at Ralph R. Smith. May I have a motion to enter executive session?
You want to call it.
Oh, well, it was called order. We called the order at 5:35, 5:33, close enough.
Move.
Second.
Well, to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment, of a particular person in corporation.
Third that.
Everybody knows that we only have a half hour and we have to get back here soon. So, all those in favor? We're now in executive session. Thank you. May I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. We're now out of executive session. And now we are going to have a hearing on the veterans exemptions. What I'd like to do is, first, I'd like to hear from members of the audience that have attended here. And because this will be videoed and put on, on local media, if you speak, could you speak at the, at the mic here? And remember, this is on the veterans exemption only, not on anything else. If you're here for, to speak to the board for another reason, wait until the actual board meeting starts and we have a public participation then. So, anybody would like to start us going?
Can you have a motion to open?
Okay. I'm being, I'm being told, excuse me. We need a motion, have a motion to open the hearing.
Some over.
Make it official, second, alright. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, Bob, now you're on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. My name is Bob Camp. I live at 8 Putnam Road. I did speak at the last meeting and I applaud the board for proposing a resolution to adopt a veteran's exemption. Looking at what you have on the agenda items here, I was looking at the first part, the basic exemption. I think in Hyde Park, the equalization rate now is someways around 60 percent. Is that right, Wayne?
.62.
62. I thought, I knew it was something in there. So that the $12,000 limit would not really affect anything more than an $800,000 house. Is that right?
It's all, it's all, so it'd be 62 percent of, so when I do my presentation, you'll see that $250,000 house is really worth 150.
Right.
So it's all, it's all relative.
Right. So you'll be going basically with the lesser of the two numbers, which would be probably with the equalization rate, since it's 62 percent, right?
Correct. So any house would be, would be adjusted for the equalization rate.
Okay. Just want to make.
To make it fair.
I think, I thought I understood that, and I think that's a good idea. I know at the last meeting, we talked about this bill from Governor Cuomo, not having anything to do locally, but it's a mandate from the state to put into effect. And I like the fact that you're already, ready to let him know that you want his ability to help also here locally. That would be very nice if he does do something. We'll make sure we get letters off to him, too. And I appreciate this very much. And I know that you did say at that time that you cannot start with the maximum if you don't want to, because you can't go down lower once you put something into effect. You can go higher. Is that right?
Yes.
I think that should be understood, too, by the veterans who will be affected by this, that it could increase depending. And that the rate here is not going to affect us non-veterans too much. We're going to be able to help the veterans by this being passed, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much, and I got to get to another meeting by seven. That's why I jumped up here quick. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else would like to get up and, and speak to the board?
My name is Kenneth Marr. I'm a veteran. I had been down to the county to check on veterans exemptions and went to the tax assessor. I think more information should be published on this. The thing I'm proposing now is, if you go with this exemption, is this going to be published in the paper or where are you going to get the information from as to what kind of exemption you get? And will there be a different exemptions for veterans in combat and non-combat? Does anybody know that?
Yeah. The, the way, the way it works, there's the standard deduction for a veteran who served during wartime. That would be, include the conflicts go for that. So virtually every veteran since probably 1962 would fall under one of those categories. The next is for serving in a war zone during combat. And the third is disability. That's based on a percentage. And those numbers are all known to us. Mr. Carlanda has gotten that information from the county with the percentage of those that have disabilities and what the percentage is. So all that has been calculated into the numbers that Mr. Carlanda has in his presentation. I don't know, was that, was that published on the website?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So it's also on the website. So, we know what it will cost. We know how many veterans there are. We know how many served during war. And we know how many were in combat, because that's all part of the county registry. And we know all those that were disabled and what percentage. So, in Mr. Carlanda's presentation and his numbers, they include all those factors, so...
They're all wartime.
It's, it's still, I prefer, personally, we'll feel more secure once we have passed this and once we have numbers so that we can say, we said this and yes, it really was this.
I, I want to know if, when you have all this information, is it going to be published in a paper or are we going to have to come to the Board of Education? And where would we go to get this information?
Doug, if you want me to answer.
We can put it on the website. Anybody that's a registered county, town, whatever, veteran at this point in time, with your paperwork and your appropriate credentials, will automatically get the school tax exemption if it's passed. So, there's nothing that any veteran needs to do if you're already registered.
If you're not, but if you're a non-veteran and you want to know what it is costing, those numbers, we certainly could put on the, on the website, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And both presentations are on there.
We can, we will publish those.
No, I'm interested in it right now, because I do have an exemption. I went down to the, a assessor in the town of Hyde Park and was told that I was, I should have had an exemption from the day I bought the house, but I never, never got it until one of the newer assessors took over the assessor's office. And so, that's why it's important to me. And if this exemption, exemption is going to be in addition to the exemption I have from the town. Is it going to be?
Yeah.
Just an exemption for?
It's, it's two different things.
The property, the taxes I pay for the school taxes.
The town exemption and the school exemptions are two different things.
Right. That's what I'm getting at. So, this is going to be a school exemption, exemption from the school taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the only way I can get it is go onto a website? It's not, all that information is not going to be printed so I could go down and get a tip, a copy of what the, the details are? Is that right?
You automatically will get it. So if you wanted to find out about your, your specific situation, you could either call me up and I could go through it with you, or you can go to the county and they can do the same thing.
You go to the county?
Mm-hmm.
Where do you, where do I go when I, if I go to the county?
Well, it's, it, it could change between now and, and next August, when the tax levies set, because more people could join as veterans. So it could, it could fluctuate a little bit between now and then. But basically, you can look at the value of your house, you have your tax bill, and you have the assessed value of your house, and you have your situ, your own situation. You'd have to bring your paperwork, your veteran paperwork with you to the county, and they will figure out for you exactly what your scenario is.
So, I have to go to the county with this information? And then the county, what, what does that have to do with the property tax that the, the town of Hyde Park is collecting? Why do I go to the county?
All the, all the tax bills are made through the county and mailed to us to mail out. It all, it all surfaces, or, excuse me, it all runs through the county-wide system. So when we, we put our bills, they actually come from the county. So your individual situation, based on your paperwork, so if you're signed up as a veteran already, it's just going to come off automatically. If you want to understand the numbers behind it, you would bring, you'd have to bring your veteran's credentials with you. So, like Dr., Mr. Heeder said, you know, if you were in a combat zone, or if you were, you know, during wartime or disabled, you, you know, it'd be specifically different for each individual based on what your veteran's credentials are.
And who do I bring that to?
The county could figure it out, or you could bring it to me and I could do...
Well, when you say, when you say the county, is that the, is that the county clerk or what?
It's, the Office of Real Property Services.
Pardon?
The Office of Real Property Services.
And this is not going to take effect until when? August, the next year?
This wouldn't take, in fact, if we vote by March 1st, depending on whatever comes up, it wouldn't take effect until next tax levy, which would be the tax levy for 2015.
Well, we, we pay school taxes, and we have to have the school...
In September.
In, by, you have your budget in May, right?
Right.
And the school taxes are paid in October.
It's September, October, yep.
Yeah.
It's for that one.
So, actually, it's going to take effect on my next school, school taxes in October.
That's correct.
And, because they already had me listed as combat...
Then you actually don't have to do anything. Your status as a veteran, if the school district decides to, to adopt whatever scenario it decides to adopt, you don't have to do a thing. It'll automatically happen for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Or anybody else want to comment or questions, or, I'm sure, even if you want to repeat yourself, that's fine. We have until seven, and I'd like to hear from you. I liked, I was hoping members of the community would be here who weren't veterans, just to balance it out. But if anybody is out there who would like to speak, I know it's, puts everybody on the spot to come in front of veterans who we, you know, owe a lot to, to come up and say, "I can't afford it." But, you know, we would like to hear from community members that aren't, whether it's positive or negative, you know? So, anybody would like to speak, this is your chance.
Okay, Doug, there's one thing I wanted to say. You said it was any veteran. According to the state website, it's not any veteran, it's only those that served in periods of war, which is World War II, Korean, Vietnam, and then Persian Gulf conflict, which means anything from 1990, was it August 2nd of 1990 to present? So if it's a Cold War veteran, they're not into the exemption unless they have expeditionary medal. I'm one of those. That's why.
Okay. Well, you wouldn't expect the, the state to make anything easy out of this. Well, perhaps since we're not, anybody doesn't want to talk, we, we can discuss them on ourselves. The, I know we're going to do it later on, but maybe there are people here that don't necessarily, you know, have other things that they want to do. We could discuss the options now.
I could present now if that's helpful.
Why don't you do that, Wayne? And then, just so it's out there again, and then we can discuss, we, so we have a half an hour.
I'll save time for later.
If you could put the, especially the slides with the numbers that...
Yep.
Okay. And Forrest, will you be able to see those numbers on the, you're going to look at it?
We'll have Steve add them, add the slides in separately, I think. In some cases, I know he's come back and added the presentation in.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, that's true. Yeah. Oop, wrong one. Oh, they're all together? Are they all together again? Yeah, okay. I know, I know. I forgot. I'm old, I'm old, I forget things, you know?
Alright, so we had quite a bit of conversation at the last meeting in October with regards to the veterans exemptions, and some good questions came out of it. So I had promised to come up with the numbers. What does it look like? Now, we've got to remember, this is on a, a very, very, how do I want to say it the best? The average, we're using a $250,000 assessed value. So not everybody sitting in here or out there has a $250,000 assessed home. So you would have to adjust, go to the county, and based, so each individual circumstance is different. But I think people wanted to get an idea of what it, you know, what it, what it looked like based on a circumstance. So that's what tonight's presentation is about. So the, the categories that were spoke about before, equalize or equal numbers that actually affect your assessed values. So there's four funding categories that I came up with. I was asked to do the default, which is what we would be voting on this evening. The minimum, I took a number that was kind of in between, and I took it all the way to the max. And what's important to note, notice is that if my home's assessed value on the right-hand side of the slide is $40,000, I could get a maximum exemption or reduction of assessed value of up to $30,000 at the minimum standard. And so again, so if you have a $45,000 house, it would slide up and down based on what your assessed value is. The default, which again, as I mentioned, would be what we are voting on this evening, is where, where everybody starts. It's, it's, and you'll see at the end of the slide presentation that we have some options to go forth with, moving into the future. But right now, for tonight, the default exemption is where we, where we are. So if we have an $80,000 assessed value, and we chose the default, your maximum assessed value reduction would be $60,000. So it's, it's all formula-based. Again, it comes from the county. I was able to distribute that, that paperwork out to the board, had lots of good conversations and lots of examples with several board members, so they understood it correctly. But it is all formula-based. So there's not much, outside of your current or your, your specific circumstance that can change outside of what we're putting up here this evening to give the idea. In-between was kind of in-between the maximum and the default. And again, that was $120,000 assessed value reduction if your house is worth 160. And the maximum would be $280,000 off of your assessed values. Oftentimes, some of the districts, because I wanted to find out who did the maximum, and some of the districts, southern, south of here, have taken advantage of using the maximum values or values closer to that, but none in this area or north. Very, very few took that. There was a town, town of Poughkeepsie, that did elect to do the maximum. But I was warned, once you go, you go to the top, you can't go back down. And I mentioned that last time when we presented. So what we choose tonight, we can always move up, but we can never move back down once these two hearings or one hearing are completed. The purpose of this activity is to show categorical scenarios of taxes in each of the five towns. Like I said, utilizing a true market value, $250,000 home. So Hyde Park is in the, the only, the only town within our district that's not at 100% assessed value. So a home in Hyde Park, instead of being $250,000, is 155. And so if you take $250,000, multiply it by the, the 62% equalization rate, you come up with $155,000. So that's what, that will, that will follow through the whole presentation.
Wayne, before we go on, my understanding was that the real market value is, is arrived at by taking the assessed value and dividing it by .62. So if you have a real market value and multiply it by .62, you get back to the assessed value.
Right.
But the way this reads, it says you're taking the .62 and multiplying it times the assessed value, which gives you, I, I have no idea what that number is.
It, it, it just equalizes all four towns or all five towns, because it's, four of them are at full value.
Right.
And you want to make the fifth one at, at its full value. So a $250,000 assessed value house in Hyde Park, once put through the equalization process, equals 155.
Wayne, I think what Dan is saying is, you're, a full market value of $250,000, if you could sell it for $250,000 in Hyde Park, is on the rolls assessed at 155. So look at it that way.
Yeah. But that's why I said...
Yeah, that's not what he says.
That the way it reads, it says, "Important to note that a $250,000 assessed value home," which would imply the real market value for that house is probably a half a million, 400,000.
Yeah. He's saying that the last sentence on that thing should say, "Full market, full market value."
That is quite a difference. But they go, they attach, the tax rates on your assessed value.
Mm-hmm.
So that 250 out there is your assessed value. The market on that, say, 250 home is probably 300,000.
It could be.
So really, if you just flip the numbers in that sentence, it'd be more accurate. $155,000 assessed value actually has a 250, theoretically has a $250,000 market value.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
As long as we understand that.
So, what, what does that mean for us?
No, the difference, that's wrong, because that's the 60, that's the 62, the .62 is 155, right?
Yeah. 250 times .62 is 155.
Right.
Well, if you want to get from the 155 to 250, you don't multiply by .62.
You divide it.
You divide it by .62.
Correct. That's correct.
If you, if you were to reference the, the backup that I had given you, it, it gives each town the calculation of taxes, and that might help, because you have a taxable assessed value, which is really before any equalization rate, multiply that by, actually divide that by your, your equalization rate to give you your equalized full value. So for each town.
Well, you are multiplying it. It's .62, multiply.
Right.
I, I think we got, let's kind of move on.
Okay.
Alright.
Actually, if, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I'm struggling with the first chart, where you've got minimum, default, in-between, and max, and then you've got four numbers in parentheses. Can you go, yeah?
Sure. So...
So what, what are the, what are the four categories referring to? And what are the numbers, I mean, I understand 30, 60, 120, and 280, but what is, what are the other numbers in parentheses?
The, the numbers in parentheses are, so if I, if I served during wartime and we were at the minimum value, and my home is worth $40,000, I could take a $6,000 exemption for that portion.
Okay.
And then if I served in a combat zone, I could take the six, add the four, and that bumps me up if, if I was in a combat zone at the minimum level, and so on and so forth. And then if I was disabled and in wartime, sorry, and in the combat zone, I could take those three numbers and my maximum assessed value reduction based on a $40,000 home at the minimum could be $30,000.
I understand. So, for the first bullet item under minimum, 6, 4, and 20 add to give 30,000 as the maximum exemption for a home that's assessed at $40,000. Okay. So what are the, the bullet labels, minimum, default, in-between, and max?
The default is where we start, as I mentioned. I guess by law, we have to adopt the default to begin with. And again, wartime, 12,000, combat zone adds another eight to bring you to 20, and then your disability is 40, so your maximum that you can come up with with regards to default is $60,000 if your home is assessed at $80,000 under the default situation. Now, like I said, and I, I mentioned to the gentleman over here, that everybody's going to be different. This is just as, as a slate, as, as a point of understanding and reference given to us by the Office of Real Property Services, so that...
Okay. Let me, let me ask you a question. Just to try, at the default level, and I have a house that's worth $55,000. Can I still get the maximum?
No.
Right?
You would be, you would slide down accordingly.
I guess the question that Steve is asking is, by how much and what's the formula?
And again, it would ta, it would take you going to the, to Duchess County Real Property Services, take your bill, your credentials, and they will figure out your next bill.
I'm eligible for the maximum.
Okay.
But my house isn't worth $60,000. That's what I'm asking here. Do I just don't pay, I don't pay any taxes? Or, you know?
Well, that's $60,000 off of your total, so you'd still have $20,000. So if I was less than...
I don't have an $80,000 house. We, we, we passed the default.
You would have no taxes.
And I have a $55,000 house.
You would have no taxes.
Then I'd have no tax.
That's correct.
I think that's important to know.
Yep.
Okay. Let me go the other way. What if you have $160,000 home?
Then the maximum is...
Are you, is the maximum still 60,000 or is it then 120,000?
No, 60.
60. Okay.
For the default.
For the default. Okay. So, so what you're illustrating there is actually the maximum deduction at that level?
Yep.
And what the property value has to be in order to reach that maximum? Okay.
But that says that you'd never get to a point where your knockoff is equal to your assessed, you're paying no taxes.
Only if it's worth less.
Only if it's less than what the maximum, only than what they calculate, 30, 60, 120, or 280, depending on what we choose.
That can go both ways.
But Wayne, if you had the $80,000 home in Hyde Park, you'd take the equalization rate off of that plus...
That's correct.
...equalization rate off the deductibles.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a scenario, Gary, the one I gave you.
In relative terms, it's the same.
Yeah. Gary asked me a good question on an email several weeks back, and he asked me, you know, with an equalization rate, as we all know, an equalization rate's supposed to equalize taxes. And, and, you know, so we did an experiment between Hyde Park and Clinton. So we took the $250,000 house, we first adjusted it for equalization rate, and we came up with the 155. So we're starting, we're starting with 155. We assumed that the maximum reduction was, was, was based on the $80,000 assessed value home, and $60,000 was reduced. And again, the equalization rate is multiplied times that $60,000. So your $60,000 in Hyde Park only becomes $37,200 once multiplied through.
Right.
So the adjusted assessed value, once you, you've done that, you have to take the 155 and subtract out the $37,200, which is also adjusted for EQ. So it's...
Correct.
So it, it, it's relatively even. And your final adjusted value, once that's subtracted out, would be 117. This adjusted value for default is then multiplied by the updated tax rates. Remember, Mr. Sheehan brought up a great point. Last board meeting, when we were at North Park, he brought up the fact that our tax rate's going to go up, and the answer is yes. So everybody's going to share in that tax rate increase as we remove assessed value from the, from the rolls. So, once we got there, we took the $117,000, adjusted for both the equalization rate for the assessed value and for the, the maximum. And we, so we basically took $117,000 and multiplied it by the new tax rate... and we, so we basically took $117,000 and multiplied it by the new tax rate. Remember, the tax rate went up, and not much, but it certainly, it is going to have an effect. And that new tax rate was 38.06, let's just say. And the tax bill was $4,484.2. So to self-check ourselves, we said, well, you know, let's check out another town. So we took another town, and now remember, there's no assessed, there's no equalization rate change in this next town, so it's all going to go by 100%. You take your same $250,000 average assessed value home at full equalization rate, because they're at 100%, and you subtract out the $60,000. Again, we're utilizing the same default, and our adjusted assessed value was 190. So if I'm in this category, I have a $250,000 house, I subtract that $60,000, I'm left with 190. I take that 190 and multiply it by that town's tax rate, okay? That town's tax rate happens to be 23.6, and it came out to be exactly the same, which was $4,484.2. So if we did it with all five towns, it, you know, the equalization rate works for this system.
And as long as it doesn't change, it will continue to work.
That's correct.
And we're comparing that with someone that doesn't have the exemption, tax would be 5,900.
Right.
So there's quite a bit of difference there.
All right.
Okay, well, just for completeness, then, you're saying for a $250,000 home, with a default maximum deduction, the tax reduction would be around $1,400, I believe, if I remember seeing it right.
I, I think you're correct, if I'm following you correctly, yes.
Just so the public knows what, what we're talking about.
It's significant, it definitely is.
Wayne, are, on the, the prior slide, are you just giving four examples based on assessed value? Is that what the four bullets are?
Yes.
Okay, so effectively, it's the maximum exemption for any home, regardless of the value of the home, is roughly 75% of, well, according to this, exactly 75% of the market value.
What winds up happening, and the, the county told me is, they, they start to reach their maximums, so you'll never see anybody, if we put the maximum here in Hyde Park, who would ever reach that based on the maximums that they're allowed to go up to. So it just, it just wouldn't exist. You'd kind of like, you'd like force yourself out of it.
I thought I understood until you elaborated.
Yeah, so in other words, the, the, up in the maximum rates, people aren't seeing $280,000. That's the easy way to say it, reduced from their, from their property.
Why not?
Part of how it works.
That doesn't make any sense.
I, I think what.
So you're saying the assessed value will never match the market value?
It was my understanding that it was a straightforward calculation. So if the home is appraised at $360,000, then why would the maximum benefit not be 280, 280,000?
That's what the town told me, that as you go higher, people, I guess there's a maximum, which they didn't give to me, like, under the maximum situation. You force yourself out of the ability to reduce $280,000.
So there's a, a maximum appraised value for real estate to which this applies?
Right. And then this is all assumed with the number of exemptions. So for each town, as we move into the next couple of slides, the process is this. What, what they gave me, and as I shared with all of you, is a formula, and a large spreadsheet, it was on a large paper. And what I needed to do for each town was to put in the number of veterans, which we have in the system. That's what's in the system today, or at the time, you know, back in October, when they gave these to us, the numbers of, of veterans that were, so for example, there was 43 people in Clinton the day that I got it. There were, for wartime, there were 37 folks in a combat zone in Clinton on the day. This could change at any time. But anyway, so you take the number of veterans exemptions collected by each town, as, you know, and, and you input it into the spreadsheet, you compute the total exemptions for each town by category, right? And again, it depends on what folks have, and subtract them from the total taxable assessed values. And you calculate what Kevin mentioned last week as the new tax rate. As your assessed value goes down, so does your tax rate for that town change. As assessed value reduces, your tax rates actually go up. Because you have to get, you have to get it from somewhere, so maybe it's coming off of somebody's, but everybody else is making up an increased tax rate.
Wayne, could you, could you just hold up for a second? Because it's supposed to be a group event. Does anybody out there have a question so far on what Wayne has said, that you don't understand?
I understand a calculation for a given value of a home, I haven't, from this, I haven't got any.
Well, I, I just went through one.
I'd like to see one written on the screen there, so I can see what it comes out to. I didn't follow you on all your calculations.
Right, so i, i, if you take a, take a $250,000 house, assessed value home, okay, that's in Hyde Park. Right, Hyde Park has a 62% equalized value. Right away, you're going to multiply that out. That same house in Hyde Park is really going to have $155,000 assessed value on the books. So when you get your tax bill, that's what you're going to see. You're also going to take the maximum rate, which we just went through on the default. So I was in a combat zone, I worked during, I, I served during wartime, and I had a disability at the max. Okay, so as a result, I have $60,000 to take off my, my assessed value for my home. 250, it's really now 155, so I'm taking 155 and I'm subtracting that full value of $60,000.
But is that 60,000 taken off of 155?
Well, $60,000 is also adjusted for the equalization rate, to be fair. So in other words, not only is the house adjusted for equalization, but so is the maximum rate for which you can take out off of your taxes, so it's fair.
When you wind up with an assessed value after the equalization rate and the reduction?
117.
117?
Mm-hmm. And then that 117 is multiplied by the updated tax rate that I mentioned. Because once you, once you reduce any assessed value out of a system, or out of a, you know, a tax calculation, you're going to see rates increase. All right, so that rate increase for that particular town was 38.06. And now, instead of taking $155,000, I'm taking $117,000, which has the reduction, and multiplying it by the new tax rate, which gave me the 4,484.
How much?
4,484. And then we did the same thing for Clinton, same exact scenario, no equalized value, and it comes out to be the same. We did that for Poughkeepsie, or we did that for any of the other towns. Under our scenarios, the, the same thing would come up, up to, up to 4,484.
So you were saying the veteran with $250,000 house, you're going to say $4,484 taxes?
Under the default.
That's before the STAR exemption.
Yes, good point.
Still has a STAR exemption too, comes off of that.
But the STAR exemption's going to be reduced because the, isn't the STAR exemption going to be reduced?
Yep, because the assessed value's gone down.
Because the assessed value was reduced.
So the government saves money.
The STAR exemption is a percentage of the, the assessed value. Since we're reducing the assessed value, the STAR exemption is reduced.
Yep. Excellent point, that, I had it at the end, but yes, that's absolutely correct. So it's a, sort of a win-win there. All right, so.
How do they reduce the STAR? How, how do they calculate that reduction?
The reduction to STAR? It just comes off your assessed value. Yeah, it's just a direct calculation, based on how STAR comes up with your STAR amount.
Okay. The other point they should be aware of too, when we're saying 38 per thousand, what up to, it's only a matter of like 60 cents.
Yes.
Where a thousand went up, as far as the tax rate. Right, it's around 60 cents?
The next slide after this will show you the, the scenario. So now we've come up with the new tax rates, we've subtracted out everything we needed to take care of. So if we're on number five, we would determine the increase for each scenario. The tax rate times the average home, that's what you're using. We had to pick something, and typically we've always picked 250, and we divide that by 1,000. So if I, my house is $255,000, I take 255 and multiply, multiply it by that, that rate, and that would give me, you know, where I am with regards to my taxes.
But you're not saying that on that number six, you're not saying that for veterans? Because I don't see any word, anything in here that says veterans.
Well, I just went through the scenario with you. If you were 250 in Clinton, which doesn't have an equalization rate, I'm taking $60,000 off of 250 to come up with 160. So now my 160 is multiplied by Clinton. That's a good point, a good point.
I got all the tenure thing, oh, the tenure, oh, yeah, I did, I did, I did.
So if I can piggyback on what Ken said for a minute there, what we're really doing here is applying exemptions to specific real properties, and so effectively reducing the total assessed value for a town. So that affects the tax rate that's applied. And so now, the veterans realize that reduction because it's applied to their real property specifically.
Yep.
Even though the tax rate went up. They're going to be paying the higher tax rate.
That's right, everybody shares in it, yep.
A sum total lower tax bill because their property is exempted by a certain percentage.
Just by a less assessed value.
Okay.
Good point.
Okay, we're coming up with about five minutes left.
I, I think this is the most important.
Well, I'd like to give another chance to anybody that wants to speak up from the audience, please. Please, please come up to the mic.
My name's Ed Forrest, I addressed the board the last time. First of all, as a veteran, I'd sincerely like to thank all of you for your hard work and analyzation that you're doing in regards to this veterans' benefit. I do have one concern, okay? You had mentioned that you do not want to vote on a maximum benefit. A little pretense of possibly in the future, you'd want to reduce it. And if I'm not, hard to believe, because as veterans, I speak for all of them here, we all gave the max. A lot of us gave more than the max. I, I think it would be inconceivable, even considering the future, reducing a veterans' benefit. I mean, I, that's, you know, just my opinion, I know I speak for a lot of folks. And I know that a lot of the towns on a property tax exemption years ago, there was also a minimum, a default, and a max. And they all said, but I question, obviously it's the max. It's doing the right thing for veterans, we gave the max. That's my only comment, because again, here we are in a town of Hyde Park, a town of Roosevelt. If we pass this thing, okay, to our residents, as maximum benefit, God, this would make us a shining star here, a great example of what we do for, for veterans here. But to insinuate that we won't pass the, or reconsider passing the maximum benefit to possibly reduce it in the future, that's a tough one. That's a tough one, so I respectfully ask you to reconsider that. Because we all know veterans here, we have veterans in our family, I'm sure. I wondered, did they give less than the max? Did they give less than the max after 9/11, or prior to that? You know, in Vietnam, and Korea, and World War II? None of them gave less than the max. Again, thank you very much for considering this, I appreciate it.
All right, just, just before you sit down, I would like to comment on that. There's no question that people gave the maximum that they could. The problem, as I see it, and you know I'm a veteran, is that, that former exemptions that were given were paid for. They were paid for in, in an equitable manner. This one came with no money. So it's very difficult for the seven of us to sit up here and decide how much, how much I can afford. You know, maybe I can afford the max, maybe I can, I, I probably could, you know, it'd be a stretch, but, you know, I probably could. And have to wonder about other non, non-veteran people, can they afford that? We, we have to take that all into consideration. If it was, it was going to be divided equitably on a, on a income tax level, it'd be a no-brainer. You're absolutely right, it'd be a no-brainer. That's not what the governor did to us, though. He, he said, we want to do something with the veterans, but, and I'm going to look good by, by saying, before, you know, before the election, but I'm not going to give any money for it. And not only that, we're going to make it incumbent on a seven-member board, or a five-member board, or a 10, or however many there are, to decide who's going to pay. And, and that's, that's, that's different, I'm just saying, yeah, yes, I think every one of us would agree that, you know, you deserve the maximum, it's just the how it's, it's paid for, and who is paying for it. And it's, it's not an easy thing to sit here and make this decision.
I respect what you're saying, I really do, you know, who's going to pay for it? But then again, as I mentioned in the previous school board meeting, how much would the non-veteran pay to have avoided what I saw? Would they pay $10 a year, $100 a year, $1,000 a year, to be away from their friends, their family? To come home disabled, we'll say? To not sleep in a bed for 10 months? To trudge through the slums of the Nam, which I did? I want to speak for my World War II brothers, or Korean brothers, the ones who were in Iraq. But to put a price, and we're not talking millions here. Every non-veteran that I know, okay, without exception, would pay not to have seen what I saw. You can't put a price on that, you know, Doug.
Well, and I don't disagree, I don't want to get into an argument, but.
No, but I'm just saying, you know.
In, in the case of World War II, Korea, Vietnam, there was a draft. You didn't have much of a choice.
Oh, wait, wait, hold it, I volunteered for the draft.
All right, I volunteered also, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, wait, wait, I've heard this argument, were you going to say, what about the people who were drafted, didn't have a choice? Okay, that should not even come into this, a veteran is a veteran is a veteran.
No, I'm trying to point out the difference between the level of commitment and the reason for the commitment is different all across the board. And I'm not saying that anybody who served, served less than another, just because they were drafted, or they, it's just that it's, it's, it's not as straightforward as you, in my opinion, that you make it.
When we all raise our hands, whether we're drafted or enlisted, it's straightforward, we're all going to give the max. The level of commitment, a veteran is a veteran is a veteran. The dead, the wounded, they don't say, is this guy drafted? Was this guy enlisted? We're to say. So I, I don't buy that argument, Doug, I'm sorry. A veteran, veteran, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? Please come to the mic.
A lot of veterans like me, we're getting on in age, and when we pass on, what happens to the spouse? And the exemption, because the exemption.
According to the state website, it carries over to your spouse.
Jeff, isn't there a gold mother, or some kind of other thing we have to vote on to allow that to happen?
Just a second.
It didn't say that on the website, so once you agree.
Gold Star family.
Gold Star. Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mike Athanas, R9G, commander of the Hyde Park American Legion, and we have a lot of senior veterans in World War II, Korea, Vietnam. And we haven't got any of the current conflicts, but we're working on. But I was under the understanding this meeting was going to start at seven and I got in late.
No, it was, it was published in the papers.
Anyway, a question I have is.
But we will be discussing it later on again.
Are the calculations being performed on all the veterans in Hyde Park or just the property-owning veterans?
Property-owning.
Property-owning.
Yeah.
So that would put a different value on, on the numbers. Okay, I was curious about that because a couple of people asked me about that and I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, that's why Mr. Kurlander went to the county and got, got the, all the names. We have a list, a spreadsheet with who served, when, what categories they belong in, whether they were disabled, how much, what the percentage of disability is. All that is public knowledge that, that Mr. Kurlander has already gotten from the county.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Something I hadn't thought about. This information is passed on to the county from the federal government? It's not required by an individual to bring it to the county to get it registered?
No, they have to apply. The county.
Every, every, every individual veteran has to bring that information initially to the county to get his information entered onto the county roll. It's all during. And the word we're using is veteran. What about a twenty-year, a ten to twenty-year serviceman who's in his fifteenth year? He's still in the service. Does he qualify for this right now or does he have to wait until he retires? Well, any veteran.
Oh, was he still active?
I mean, he's still active. So he could, you know, we, we can have, many of the servicemen that they make it a career will stay in the service for twenty years. Iraq conflict, the Afghanistan conflict are under that window. And they may still be in the service.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be a veteran.
That's the question. So they're not a veteran and they don't qualify for this?
Right, until they are a veteran.
Yeah, which means they left out a significant number of people that, you know, they've left their families, they've left their wife and kids behind who were struggling while they were away. And this, this pomo-generated item doesn't provide any relief at all for them.
Before we start to reel me, I, I, one thing I forgot to mention, I did get it. You'll notice Mr. Sheehan is not here. I got a phone call from him this afternoon. One of his employees was seriously.
He just wanted you to say a word.
Yeah, well, okay. Okay, I guess, I wasn't going to give a name or anything, but, you know. Anyway, he was unavoidably unable to be here tonight. And he wanted to know that he did support, he wanted the U people to know that he did support the veteran exemption. And he is comfortable with the, the default level of, of the exemption. He, he felt badly that he couldn't be here and he didn't want that anybody to think he was just avoided the meeting because of the, this issue. So I think we're ready to.
Hey, there's just one thing about the gold star is not at the spouse. That's if you have a child that was killed.
Correct.
Oh, the carry.
The child that was killed.
Parents of a child who was killed in combat.
Combat.
Okay. So the spouse carries over from the veteran?
At least that's the way I was reading it from the website.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to, if there's no other questions out there, I'd like to start the meeting.
We have to close the public hearing?
Yeah, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Do we, are we now in normal session or do we need a vote on it? All right, so. Yeah, yeah. No, we're going to go right into the regular meeting and we'll start with the, I should actually probably get myself up. So this time, may we start with the pledge of allegiance? May we have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in our name. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm suffering.
He didn't tell me that. Oh, okay. Naturally, I didn't bring up the, the thing. Let me, while I'm bringing it up. Okay. I believe there are no agenda modifications. May I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved?
All who's in favor? Thank you very much. And now we have pride.
Yes, and we are here at Ralph R. Smith for the Ralph R. Smith presentation. And as part of the pride section, we're going to hear, thank you Kristen for coming in with your students and thank you students for being here, proud Ralph R. Smith students. And they're going to play us some music.
Good job.
Thank you. Great job. That was amazing. Thank you so much. And thank you parents for coming out as well. Well, well, we're still under the pride section. I did want to say that our fall drama was this past weekend. I know a number of board members were able to attend along with Cora. And so I don't know if some of the board members or Cora wanted a chance. I was not able to attend.
It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of action, a lot of, a lot of great lines. I think Dwayne Olson had the best lines probably in the, in the whole way. It, it was just a frantic comedy that, with a very small cast that just did a superb job. They were just wonderful. They really.
Their timing was incredible. I mean, just, you know, watching the whole thing unfold and they just, they were ready to react right after the next. And, and, I mean, it was, we, we went and took a couple of friends with ours that, who don't have children and don't have a reason to go to the school events. And they were just impressed. You know, they say, you know, this could have been, you know, just off Broadway. And it was a great job. It was, it was very impressive, very impressive.
The other group that outdid themselves was the tech crew with the creation of a set that was really just amazing for a high school production. A two-story set with doors everywhere that had to be slammed on cue and everything was solid as could be. So both the performances and the construction and the support that the show got from kids who were not on stage was really quite wonderful.
Very good. Thank you. I just wanted to comment that, you know, we, we attend a lot of chamber events and Wayne is a member of the Hyde Park Chamber of Commerce. And Doug and Wayne and I were at the Chamber breakfast. The November one is at the Vanderbilt Visitor Center every year. And it's just really nice to see all the community members there. And we had the opportunity to thank them for all the support that the Chamber of Commerce offers to our students in the way of scholarships and invite them into concerts in the winter season. So it's always a nice event. I'd also like to thank the Visual Environment Committee for the awards that we received this year. We will be hanging them proudly both in district offices as well as a plaque at the athletic facility, a very nice plaque. I know that Doug and Wayne and Kevin and Elliot were able to go to the ceremony at the Wallace Center where they received the awards on behalf of the district. So I'd like to thank the Visual Environment Committee. I had the opportunity to go to see a performance by Cedric Watson. He's a Creole and Bayou performer. He, he's a two-time Grammy winner. And Gina Calenti, our French teacher at the high school, had an opportunity to invite him in for a day. And he came in and he visited the French classes and gave lessons on French Creole. And then they had a couple of assemblies at the end of the day. And it was just lively and entertaining. And just to have a performer of that caliber come to visit the students and, and teach them and give a performance was, was a very worthwhile endeavor. And I don't know if anybody else has anything?
Anybody?
That's under superintendent's report.
Yeah, which is next?
Which is next. So we did, one item was to have a timeline for the request for proposal for the heat project at Heveland Middle School.
Sir, we're going out for an RFP for Construction Management Services. So I wanted to give, some of them, there's a committee made up of Gary McGrath, myself, Perry Sheldon and Elliot Garcia, who know this intimately. But I wanted to share with you the dates of what's going on. So last week, we sent out the RFP packet. We spent a lot of time putting together a good, solid RFP that recognizes the needs of the district. The week of, first week of December, which is when we get back from break, we'll be conducting tours. I believe Elliot will be bringing some of the proposed construction managers around the district and showing them the district and seeing what the reaction is. The next piece is on the 10th of December. We'll be opening the bids. And we will narrow it down, probably sit down for a couple hours and hash out what, what came back. We did put out thirteen applications, I believe. And we will narrow it down to three interviews. And we will make a Board of Regents recommendation on the eighth of January. And we hope to have the new construction management team starting with us in early January on the 10th.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to offer on behalf of the Hyde Park Central School District condolences for Gail Lennox. She was a longtime resident and longtime central office employee who passed away. So just in, in recognition of the service that Gail provided to the district, we, we offer her family condolences. We have one item we could discuss now or we have a pretty packed agenda. We could do it in December. We have had a request and we should have a conversation about it. The Board of Regents is now proposing to make the field testing mandatory. The vote on the Board of Regents is February 15th, so we could tackle it now or we could put it on December and give people a chance to think about it or do a little poking around to see what that means for them personally, either way.
In light of the packed agenda we already have, I'd like to put it on a later agenda.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yeah, that's one.
Do that in December. Great.
Okay.
And so now we are here at Ralph R. Smith. And this is annually, we visit each one of our schools and have an opportunity to learn about the programs at the school. So I'm going to invite Melissa Lawson, the principal of Ralph R. Smith, up. Last year, this, this was our last stop. And so this year it's pretty early on, but we are very happy to be back. And we always learn a lot more from you each time, Melissa. So thank you.
Yeah. And before we start, for the veterans here, thank you for your service. We appreciate all that you do for us and our country. Welcome to Ralph R. Smith and I'm happy to be back so soon to talk about some things that we have been working very hard on at the beginning of this school year. This clicker always gives me a hard time, so hopefully I'll get it to work. Just as a note of pride, we have been working to implement our Olveus Anti-Bullying or Bully Prevention Program. And it is fully underway this fall. We had a kickoff event which started with a visit from Mark Molinaro. And he talked to the kids about his own personal feelings about bullying. And the kids all got to learn about our new anti-bullying rules. We have written them as I can statements, so the kids feel empowered to take a stand against bullying. And the program, the center of the program is really around teaching kids what bullying is and what it isn't and what they can do when they encounter a bullying situation. And the whole premise of the program is to teach the kids that are standing by and watching something happen, teaching them how to take action and speak up for those who may not be able to speak up themselves. So we have four I can statements that the kids on our kickoff event learned a lot about. They played games so they could internalize what it meant. The I can statements are, I can help students who are bullied. I can include students who are left out. I can tell an adult at school or home if I know someone who's bullied and I can help stop bullying. The program continues every week in classrooms with a class meeting where they talk in groups about what they've encountered that week or any topic that the teacher wants to highlight as a concern or a skill to teach. There was a nice write-up in the Poughkeepsie Journal.
You have the visual.
Yeah, about the, the day and the event. But it's not just a one-time event. It's an ongoing program and we're already seeing the benefits. In your, on your tables, everyone has a bucket. Our school continues to be a bucket-filling school where we fill our internal buckets with positive thoughts and feelings. And so I filled your bucket today with a couple of treats because I know it's going to be a long evening. But also there is a. But also, there is a few papers that are tacked together. And there are some things that I wanted to celebrate about our school that aren't on the slides. And I just wanted you to be able to hear about the things that are going on in our building that probably aren't measurable by data or state results. So, you know, some of those things include, the teachers in this building just give 110% all the time. Whenever I asked them about a new initiative, including the Olveus Program, they jumped at the chance and said, "This is great. This is what we need. How can we do this? What do you need from me?" And, you know, the state has come down with a lot of new initiatives and they are working really hard to implement them. So I'm very proud of them. I have three teachers in the audience this evening. And they just really work hard. But our kids also do such amazing things. And you saw four of them tonight playing their instruments. And, you know, there just are some great things happening here. So I ask that you take time to look at those little slips of paper and think about our buildings as not just places of data, but places where we have little faces coming to greet us every morning. And we really care about them and want to do what's best for them. So our next slide is data. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about it. You've all heard about it in the spring. My presentation was in June. So our test results were very similar to last year. We did make some improvements mainly in the area of vocabulary development, both in math and ELA. And we've spent a lot of time talking about vocabulary in many different ways over the past year or so. And it's showing up really nicely in their test scores. We do have a focus on students with disabilities in this building and economically disadvantaged students in this building. We are a Title I school who about 50% of our kids get free and reduced lunch. And we also house the self-contained classrooms for grades three through five for the district. So it is a major priority to address their needs and make sure that they are being challenged in all the ways that we can. Our goals for this year really center around the continuing effort to do some in-house PD. We have teachers that do a tremendous job of training their own colleagues and working together to learn new things. We are focusing on two book studies this year. They're here, and I will pass them around. We, at every faculty meeting this year, we are going to be discussing Teaching with Poverty in Mind. It is a great book about how the brain develops with children in poverty and how we can implement interventions to help them. The other book study that we are doing through a colleague, with the help of a colleague at BOSIS, is Explicit Direct Instruction. And this is really helping us understand how we are planning for meaningful lessons in our classrooms. So I'll pass those around. As a district, you're aware that we are having a focus on data teams, and we continue to do that work here. We are spending all of our teacher training days focusing on developing data teams that are meaningful and that help our teachers and our students grow in new ways. And we're also continuing to use data from the assessments that we do here at school, whether it be their reading assessments, their on-demand writing pieces, MAPS data, or even just classroom instructional pieces that inform our instruction on a regular basis. This year, we were notified this fall that Ralph R. Smith has been identified as a local Assistance Plan school. That came about because we did not make adequate yearly progress for students with disabilities or students who are economically disadvantaged. And therefore, the book studies that are coming around are very important. Part of the LAP process is a self-review, and we have a committee formed. We have completed the self-review process. The self-review process includes looking at a rubric. It's the same rubric that the high school and middle school use because they're focused schools. And we had to develop plans for anywhere where we rated ourselves effective, developing, or ineffective. So it took a lot of work and time and effort and energy. And you will be presented with the plan to adopt at the next board meeting. We've really thought long and hard about what we need to focus on as a building, and the plans are solid. And I feel confident that with those plans in place, we will make growth. Our building-level team, our BLT, is up and running and as strong as ever. We are focusing on Common Core support for families. When the district did the last survey to families, there was a request for more support. "How do I help my child with this new math? I don't understand it." So we have been really focusing on that and continue to. If you look at our website, the Ralph R. Smith page, there are Common Core resources that are listed on the side. Our teachers are working on developing videos to demonstrate some of the skills that we are learning about, and so the parents can learn about them as well. And this January, we are having a Math Night that focuses on some of those new strategies that we have put in place. The second building-level team goal is around the LAP process and supporting that effort throughout the school year. One of the things that we're working on in particular is developing a vision and mission statement for our building. Ralph R. Smith is full of fun activities. And some of you, as you came in the door tonight, saw our Healthy Kids After-School Literacy Program. They are here every evening after school. And they are chosen by classroom teachers in grades three through five to focus on developing their skills as a reader and writer. And we had really nice results last year at the end of the year with this program. So we're excited to be in year two. There will be three sessions throughout the school year. And as you saw when you came in, there's a lot of activity. They're reading, but they're exercising, and they're mixing it up. And they have musicians that come once a week. And it's a really rich program. So the kids are enjoying that. We also have chess club every Friday morning here. Our kids come in before school. And we have a volunteer who runs that, and it's a great program. And we continue to have the Vassar Eye-to-Eye Mentoring Program here, where students with disabilities here at Ralph R. Smith are paired up with students with disabilities at Vassar College. And they do art projects together and really learn about what makes them special as a learner and what they need to advocate for in order for them to learn at their best. So it's a really nice program. Parent and community involvement is always spectacular at Ralph R. Smith. Our PTA donated some of our goodies here tonight. They are very active. They do a lot of fundraising, and we are working very hard to align all of our fundraising efforts with enrichment activities. Therefore, we have a tremendous amount of support for assemblies. We are bringing in two different authors this year to share their writing expertise with our families and our students. We have a Read-A-Loud Day, our book fairs, family fun nights. They're all great. We also have the unique experience of having an Astor Head Start preschool that started here this October. It's fabulous to have the little guys in the building every day. And we're looking forward to developing some nice partnerships with them, with buddy reading and things like that, once they get more established. This summer, our librarian, Sharon Foster, who's here with us tonight, helped us start our very first incoming kindergarten summer story hour series. And it was wonderful. It really helped our kids feel comfortable coming into school on the first day because they had come and met the staff. We had so many volunteers that came to help out. The kids just loved it, and the families were very appreciative. And we continue to have Fire Safety Day through Roosevelt Fire Department. We continue to have the Marist Reading Program, where Marist students come in once a week to support struggling readers. So great things are happening here at Ralph R. Smith. Do you have any questions?
Any question? Thank you, Melissa. It was very entertaining and educational. It's nice to know that there are this many programs available and people that have the interest and are developing things, especially the things in the summer before and after school. It's really a nice community.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we appreciate that so much because, you know, they're, teachers are coming in on their own time and giving their own vacation time and evening time to do that work. And it's really nice for our families.
This is amazing. So I hope, I hope these go up. There's a little link on your website, too. This is an amazing list.
Yeah. And just some cute little stories, too, you know, from kindergartners who are sharing a poem for the first time and explain, "I'm a reader," you know? And just exciting things like that that are just special and don't really show up in test scores.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, while Cora's queuing up there, I forgot to mention under superintendent's report that we are in the middle of a survey right now. This is the second of our, the second survey or a follow-up survey that, it's a parent, teacher, and student survey. The students in grades six through 12 will be taking it sometime in the next week or so. We're going to utilize the Chromebooks for them. But all letters, all parents received information about the surveys. All teachers received information about the surveys. So we're definitely encouraging people to fill out the surveys. We have baseline data from the last one. We also have, we utilize these surveys. We have increased our evening events to help parents understand the Common Core by 100% based on the information we got from surveys. So we take the surveys, we utilize the data. We have a systematic way that we look at that, at survey results. We identify things that are worth celebrating. We identify items that are, where we need to just have better communication or better public relations. And then we also use the surveys to identify our next areas for improvement and growth. And that is handled at the district level and through the building leadership team. So when Melissa lists her goals for her building leadership team, it's all based on what we have learned through the survey. So we encourage the parents and the teachers and the students to take the survey and give us our feedback. So thank you, Cora, for allowing my infomercial. And I'll turn it over to Cora for a new engineering program.
You only have five minutes.
Okay, I'll talk really fast. So it's my pleasure tonight to talk with you about Project Lead the Way. And I just want to preface my comments by saying that in the 11 years that I've been here, one of the things I've appreciated most is the conversation and support that we've had from the board when we've been able to identify new programs. Even in our difficult financial times, we've added over 25 electives at the high school in my time here without a fiscal impact. And there's just always been a great level of support, especially when we're looking at something that is as timely and critical to our students as the one I'm about to describe to you. So our plan for next year is to bring Project Lead the Way into the high school. And I'll tell you a little bit about it. Project Lead the Way is certainly supportive of STEM. And you've heard us reference that many, many times. It refers to "the teaching and learning of science, technology, engineering, and math in an integrated, innovative, and applied fashion to a level of challenge sufficient for college and/or workforce readiness." That's the official definition of STEM. And in our district, we've had many things happening in the last few years around the recognition of STEM. In particular, I want to highlight the Havilland Middle School Bard STEM Camp because that was a grant-funded program last year. I just got word today that that grant will be offered to us again. And there was so much excitement about bringing our seventh graders to Bard. They spent a full week during the summer and did five field trips between January and June. Camp Invention has run for the past three years, serving 99 students, free of charge to our families. And it's a wonderful week-long program, and many of you are familiar with the rest of those. So Project Lead the Way, and it's rare that I read you from the slide, but I will for this one because it really is the best description of the program. It's the nation's leading provider of STEM programs through world-class kindergarten through 12th grade curriculum, high-quality teacher professional development, and outstanding partnerships. Project Lead the Way helps students develop the skills needed to succeed in the global economy. And I would say that while it's a K-12 program, we are starting at the high school level in our proposal for next year. And who knows? Within a few years, we may just work backwards and introduce our five-year-olds to engineering. More than 150 institutions of higher ed are involved. In New York State, our partner is RIT, which is where our staff will attend professional development. There's very rich partnerships between districts and the higher education partners that they have, including in at least year two, partnerships with local agencies as well. And I'll tell you more about that. There are over 6,000 schools all over the country that are Project Lead the Way schools, including the District of Columbia. The benefits are numerous, and certainly I can't get them on just one slide. But certainly, one of the things that is the most rich around this program is its curriculum itself. It's rigorous, it's engaging, it's all of the things that we know and believe about putting students in front of real-world problems, having them problem-solve at very deep levels, having them really take charge of their learning. So that, the curriculum itself is outstanding. The teacher training that's required is a three-tiered requirement, excuse me, starting with just some foundational training and then in-depth work around that curriculum before teachers are permitted to begin teaching those courses. There is a role for guidance counselors and administrators that's very important in terms of identifying students who would be appropriate and interested, recruiting students. As I've been meeting with the Technology Department at the high school, one of the things they've talked about with me is the need to encourage more of our girls to be interested in the Technology Department and in particular, the engineering courses. It is a nationwide program. And so the networking that happens between schools and districts all over the country is really quite powerful. And we do have the opportunity to become a registered school, which affords our students and our staff even more opportunities than just having the classes. This is a research-based program. They have had independent studies over the last 10 years that have really identified very clearly some of the outcomes. And I'll let you take a look at those. Over and over, what we see is increasing the number of students who become interested and go into school with a STEM focus. Much more of that persistence. There are a lot of studies that speak to students who drop out of college, typically doing that in the second year. But for students who've been through Project Lead the Way courses, their stamina, their persistence, and their success rate in terms of graduation rates is particularly high. And certainly, the intention of those students to go into the careers of engineering, technology, computer science, and other areas is very impressive. So the process actually began a few years ago. We talked about wanting to bring this into the district. At the time, there was great interest. All of the technology teachers in our high school are very excited about it. When we talked about it, I want to say three years ago, although the excitement was there, you might still recall that those were particularly difficult times financially. So it was really only for that reason that we pressed the pause button. And we're really happy to be coming back. And we're, we're really happy to be coming back to it now. So, this year, uh, what will happen is registration. And in fact, I've already completed the registration process. We have two teachers at the high school who will attend training in January at RIT. And then we begin the work of working with our guidance department, beginning to identify students um, and planning for the fall. And I should say that engineering is just one of the programs under the Project Lead the Way umbrella. But for us, it's the most, um, it, it's the most reasonable place to begin because in so many ways, the curriculum reflects courses that we have in place already. So, we have our, uh, Design and Drawing for Production course, which is very similar to the first foundation course in Project Lead the Way. So, in order to be a Project Lead the Way school, in the first year of implementation, we would provide one foundation course. The following year, we add a second. And then in years three and four, we have the choice of a number of different courses under that engineering umbrella. Um, this slide really just shows you to some degree, a, a comparison of the courses that we offer. And I should point out that one of the things that the department, the technology department, is most adamant about is that there's this great excitement to bring Project Lead the Way and we're certainly moving forward. There's also recognition that there are other courses in the department that appeal to students who may not pursue Project Lead the Way kinds of curriculum and we don't want to lose those courses. So, what you see on the left, um, is the Design and Drawing for Production course, Pre-Engineering 1 and 2. Those are already being offered at the high school and have been for some time. And then you see the list of electives there. As a Project Lead the Way school, we would begin, as I mentioned, in year one, with the Introduction to Engineering Design, which is the course that's comparable to our Design and Drawing for Production course. Year two would be Principles of Engineering. And then in year three and four, we would choose from those additional courses. Um, I'll say to you that the initial thinking is that the tech department believes our first choice would be the Civil Engineering and Architecture. Again, because of what we already, um, provide and what they believe is true, at least today, around student interest. Um, but all of that won't come for another year or so, so we have time to consider that. And then at the end of it, there is a capstone course. And again, that curriculum and the requirements for that are provided by Project Lead the Way. So, there's always this question about money. And there is money in our budget this year for some of the things that need to happen. Um, our participation fee won't come due until July 1. Um, there is a purchase of some equipment that needs to happen. And some of that is required by the program itself. Some of it is, um, to either replace or upgrade equipment that we already have. And the training piece, um, is a large part of that first-year expenditure as well.
Right, just, uh-
Sure, Doug, go ahead.
You're talking about a laptop for a number of teachers and the total bill is four thousand? Are you not talking about a four thousand dollar laptop for each, each teacher?
Actually, it is a four thousand dollar laptop for one teacher. And I should say, it's not just the laptop itself.
Nobody needs a laptop for its four thousand.
Right, it, it's not the laptop by itself. It's everything that goes with that and all of the software that's attached to it and, and who knows what else. But it, the expense for the teacher materials that are associated with that laptop have been estimated at four thousand. I should say, too, that I, I've mentioned several times the courses themselves. And as is always true, uh, we will be bringing to you the course descriptions for your consideration and adoption. That would be required before we can, um, pursue this. We are hoping to have in our course guidebook, which is published in December in anticipation of January registration, um, something that references next year's course and will put parenthetically with board approval. But I, I can say to you again that the curriculum for that introductory course is very much like what we currently provide. So, our, our objective for tonight was really to just introduce the idea to you, let you know that we are really trying to pursue this. Um, both our teachers at the high school are seeking registration for the January training. Um, they are Erin Edwards and Doug Egerton. So, questions certainly for now. Uh, David later, yeah, but for the January training, we're sending just the two.
I just wanted to emphasize as well that, that when a student completes the Project Lead the Way, whichever track we take, they actually have, it's, it's a certificate and it is nationally recognized by all the universities that if you walk in with a Project Lead the Way designation on your transcript, um, you, you- that's a, a huge bonus on your college application to any engineering school. It comes from Rochester Institute of Technology and again, it's nationally recognized. So, it's a, a real boost to, um, college applications.
Cora, I'd just like to, um, once again, talk about arts. Uh, in a recent Times article, evidently, engineering schools are now requiring art classes as part of their curriculum because they found that the narrow focus, and I'm not against this, I think this is really great.
Yeah.
The narrow focus, uh, in one area isn't the complete picture. And now they're even collaborating with, uh, liberal arts schools to work together in order to, um, get a little bit more outside-the-box creative thinking along with the engineering. But I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that-
Agreed.
-the arts are also important along with these classes that the students are taking.
Goes with the whole idea of STEAM as opposed to STEM, adding that A in there for the arts.
Right.
Yeah.
For this program, is it going to take, uh, four years to implement? Is this something that the students will be able to do in junior, senior year? How is that going to work to get that certificate?
Good, thank you. So, when we met last, um, we talked about the sequence. So, for next year, we would be offering the first foundation course. And so, current juniors and seniors would not be able to complete the sequence in order to get that certificate. Um, so we're really looking at a new cohort of students. And the hope would be that we would be able to provide four sections of the foundations course. And one of the reasons that the department is hoping to fill that many is that they want to be able to account for attrition, um, assuming you, you may have a number of students who begin it and may not want to stay, but you want to have enough students in the program so that over the course of the four years, you have enough students to justify the section and have them get through that. So, we are talking about new students. And yeah, so it, it takes four years, um, to get to providing all four courses. You're required to do one, um, I, you could do two. But most schools, as I understand it, do a foundation course year one, the second foundation course year two, and then there are two electives in years three and four.
So, this is something that in junior high, they're going to have to be looking at and planning for? The parents are going to have to be aware and getting their kids to think?
Yes, and part of what we've talked about is the whole marketing of this. How, how do we share that information? We've talked about, um, things like the technology teachers, even coming to STEM camp, uh, in the summer to talk to elementary families so that there's this thing to look forward to. Our music and art department teachers currently visit the middle school, uh, in the spring before scheduling begins. They, they do a little recruiting of their own. Um, so the technology department is hoping to do some visits to the middle school. Uh, we've talked about reaching out to some FDR graduates who have gone into engineering just to come back, especially during the January break before they start their second semester, to talk to students about, you know, what is this thing called engineering and, and just how wonderful is it? Um, so that students can hear from other students. Um, so we, we have a number of ideas about how to do outreach to parents and to students, um, even starting, you know, before middle school.
And I'll just add one other thing that we've been talking about, that culturally, although we're going to start with technology teachers, this will eventually be science teachers teaching in this program, math teachers. So, when we start to market this at the middle school level, we don't want this to be the perception that, oh, these are just technology courses. This is an en- an engineering program that will involve math, science, and the technology. So, um, we, we really need maybe some people who, uh, think about, you know, ten, twenty years ago, technology as being this discrete, uh, set of courses for, uh, a special type of students who are interested in that, to really being more inclusive to make sure that we market it, that it is an engineering program.
Yeah, and that becomes even more obvious when you look at the electives. You know, the whole biomedical engineering comment, um, really speaks to a need for someone with that science background.
Computer science, the architecture, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there going to be prerequisite, or is this going to be honors-type classes? This is going to be just general?
The foundation course itself is, is the first step. Um, so there's no prerequisite for that. There would be then, to do the second foundation course, you would have to have been in the first. Um, but otherwise, no, and open to all.
Cora, what's the difference between the pre-engineering courses we offer now and the foundation courses that are part of Lead the Way?
If you don't mind, I'd like to reserve that because I know the guys are, are excited about doing the course approval. So, when we have the syllabus for you, we'll provide both. And then you can do a real comparison of what we're doing now and what the curriculum really, um, requires. So, we have to do a, a course approval presentation for you. And I, I'd like them to be able to weigh in on that.
All right, well, the, the direction I'm going is, I'm curious about the efficiency of, of maintaining Pre-Engineering 1 and Pre-Engineering 2, um, while we're also offering the, the two foundation courses.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't. Sorry, I should have made that clear.
Yeah, well, um, I guess to follow up on that, then, there's a, probably a dozen or so, um, tech electives listed here.
Mm-hmm.
And the, at least the course titles read to be significantly different than, uh, the additional courses that may be part of, uh, Project Lead the Way. Um, so, the follow-up question is whether we're going to continue to maintain the current tech electives and just add Lead the Way electives, or is there going to be some merger there as well?
Yeah, I would imagine that as we get more clarity around the electives in years three and four and after we've had some experience with the foundation courses, some of the current electives will probably drop off. Um, I would hope not all of them would because, again, we want to make sure that we're responding to the needs of more than one group of students. Um, but I, I think it's also safe to say that we couldn't manage having all of what exists now and all of Project Lead the Way. I, I just don't think we could sustain both.
Okay. Um, I guess the other, the other question I have, then, is if some of the current applied technology, uh, electives are merged or, or transitioned over to be Lead the Way-type courses, then is it a prereq to taking those courses, um, to have already taken the foundational courses? In other words, uh, let's say that you combine Principles of Transportation and Engineering or, and Energy and make it some sort of a, uh, civil engineering class.
Right.
Um, then, is it a requirement that students who want to take that also have already taken Introduction to Engineering Design and Principles of Engineering, which are the Lead the Way Foundation?
Right, if they're registering for a section that's identified as a Project Lead the Way course, then yes.
Is that a requirement of the, the program?
Yes.
Because one thing that I would like to see is the ability for students to get involved in Lead the Way and Lead the Way project, uh, classes without necessarily having to take the, the foundation courses.
That's not possible.
Yeah.
Uh, I consider that a shame. My experience in engineering school was that, um, several classes led to, uh, students taking engineering and taking up engineering as a, um, a profession because they took engineering courses without being enrolled in engineering.
Mm-hmm.
That, that seems like an analogous situation.
To my knowledge-
I encourage you to, to, you know, visit their website and go a little deeper into their program design. And again, you know, they've been around for numerous years and have done tons of research. All of their research about their program and their program design is really transparent, so, um-
Yeah, I've actually met some students that have been hired, um, in my area who participated in Lead the Way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they, they talk about what a great program it is.
Yeah.
So, I'm thrilled that we're taking it up. Um, I, I think that whatever we need to do in order to get people interested in these fields is, is important because there's a shortage of that skill in the United States.
Right.
Thank you, Cora.
You're welcome.
All right, this time, we'll, uh, go back to the alternative veterans tax exemption. Wayne, if you could go quickly through the, for people that were, uh, not here before, just the highlights.
Actually, the only people not here before are the teachers from, yeah. So, maybe he can pick up where he left off.
Yeah, go, the ones that you already did, go through like really quickly and then pick up where we kind of left off.
All right, so, so, so for those of you that weren't here before, we're talking about this part two of the alternative veteran's exemption. Uh, we were asked for some financial information. And basically, what we did is we reviewed the multiple categories that, uh, that we could fall under to make a decision on tonight, which, uh, ranged from minimum to maximum. And you could see up there the different values that, uh, we worked with. We importantly, uh, discussed the equalization rates and how that has an effect on, um, the, uh, calculation of what the veteran's tax exemption would be. Um, we talked about the process. And the process, uh, basically was to, to get the information from the state, or, excuse me, the county, uh, put that into a spreadsheet, um, compute our new, uh, tax rates and assessed values based on that, and subtract the new rate, uh, determine the increase for each scenario. Um, and then, uh, do the multiplication and division to come up with a, uh, a, a way to show a, a basis for what it might look like on your tax bill. Now, remember, this assumes that every single house is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the case of Hyde Park. So, th- this in no way gives you what is reality. It's more of a benchmark, if you will, to, uh, understanding what it might look like if this were the case. So, under the minimum, um, scenario, under all five, five of our towns, I would think we did a scenario, uh, for one of the, um, the folks here in, in the audience and also with Gary, um, personally, uh, you'll see that they're all the same the whole way through. So, no matter what the equalization rate is, it is the same for each town. So, under the minimum, about a forty-one dollar increase in taxes per year. Again, estimated based on everybody having a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. Um, default, it's about eighty-two dollars, about double. Uh, in-between, takes a, a, a spot in between the default and the maximum. We've got a hundred and sixty-seven ta- a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per year additional in taxes. And then on the maximum side, which was about almost four, four hundred dollars or three hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, these, this is a scenario, just to kind of give you where and how this might affect our taxes. Uh, one important thing that I'll take from our last presentation in October is that, uh, Hyde Park is heavily exempted to begin with. We have a lot of state and federal lands, agricultural lands. And, uh, before we start the day, we are at forty percent exemptions before we look at this. Um, so that's just a, a kind of a fact, uh, about our area and, and how that has an effect as we add more exemptions into the pool. Um, so the scenario is based on known data. As the level of the support for alternative veteran tax exemptions categories increase, so does the related tax increase for each town. Um, and that's what we talked about throughout this presentation, is that, um, as you're taking assessed value out, it has a direct effect and a direct in- increase and impact on your tax rates for each town. And, uh, I'd be remiss, uh, the veteran's assessed value will be reduced based on the level of exemption the Board of Education chooses. So, a- again, we start with the default. But next week, we can, you know, with, with the last slide, we have some options on moving forward. Um, I did work with both Eric Axelson and Catherine Malucarini, who are just fantastic at the, um, County of, uh, Office of Real Property Services in Dutchess County. I guess they've had a lot of schools coming to them. So, they were well-prepared and even more well-prepared than last year on with, uh, documents and data for help, to help me, um, pre- present and, and, and really prepare for tonight. and really prepare for tonight's presentation. So, I'd like to thank both of them there. And then the Office of Real Property Services suggested, as a couple of the board members mentioned, that as assessed values go down, so does the star payment that the government will pay out to folks out in the community. So, that's an important thing, that the government actually gets a reduction in star. So, where do we go from here? The two ways we can go is to hold a second hearing at the next board meeting on December 11th, and that would be to move the veterans' tax credit either higher or lower. I guess we hope, and I think it's planned, to have the default on the agenda tonight if the resolution is prepared, if that's the way the board decides to move. And the second thing is just to maintain the default veterans' tax credit for the 15 tax collection. However, if we don't choose to go to the minimum or up, remember the rule that you can't go back down. So, with that being said, that kind of puts it back to the folks. I'll invite folks up and sit here to answer questions, answer questions from the board.
Let me just ask you a question. We keep using the $250,000. It seems to me the values of homes and certainly in Hyde Park have been going down. I wonder if that's really a realistic number anymore.
Yeah, it was five years ago, and maybe.
And the reason I say that is if you're thinking average and you're thinking $80 is too much or $167 is too much, well, maybe it isn't that. You know, I would personally go the in-between route, 'cause I don't think the average house is worth $250 anymore.
Maybe move it down.
And therefore, that number would be less, and I think, I think we could, I think it wouldn't be a burden as much of a burden as it looks like on those slides, so that's my opinion. You know, not to prolong it, I know many of us up here looking at default, perhaps minimum, I don't know, but I think, I actually think we could do better.
Do you have the, the impact on tax rate as a percentage?
The impact on tax rate as a percentage, yes.
And while he's going to get those figures, my thought process here is that we are going to pass a budget next spring, and if it holds to our normal pattern, it's going to increase taxes by roughly 2% to 3%. And in the past, when we have affected one group of taxpayers differently than others, and normally that's caused by different equalization rates or reassessments. So, I'm thinking about the time that Poughkeepsie reassessed, and their tax rate jumped up to something on the order of 16% to 18%, whereas the town of Poughkeepsie dropped. And naturally, those taxpayers were upset with us, and in that case, we had no impact or control whatsoever. In this case, we are gonna take a subsection of our population and increase taxes on them through a conscious decision. I would like to minimize that impact and perhaps spread it out over several years, depending on what the percent increase is gonna be.
You have the number, Wayne?
Yep, I'm just gonna read through them. It goes Clinton, Hyde Park, Pleasant Valley, Poughkeepsie, Ryanbeck. So, without anything changing, nothing changing, it's, I'm not gonna go out four decimals, I'll only go out two. So, Clinton is 23.26, Hyde Park is 37.53 with the, because of the equalization, 23.69 for Poughkeepsie, 23.26 for Ryanbeck. And moving to the minimum, the tax rates go up by 23.2, 23.43. Up in Hyde Park, 37.79, 23.43 in Poughkeepsie, and 23.43 in both Poughkeepsie and Ryanbeck. Moving into the default, the tax rate goes up 23.6. So, as you can see, it's inching up each time we move up the level of support. Hyde Park goes up to 38.06, Pleasant Valley is 23.60, as well as Poughkeepsie and Ryanbeck being 23.60.
So, what was the differentials, like point?
About less than a percentage.
Point six?
Mm-hmm, somewhere in there.
So, is that, is that worst case, or is that based on registration for?
That we just got up to default.
It's up to default, yes.
Okay, but my question is about whether this is based on having the current number of veterans registered for the, it's, so it's not, not based on worst case, which would be if all veterans signed up for the?
It's not right now, no. It's based on what signed up for.
Based on current numbers.
The day that I got the information from the county.
Okay.
Okay, rather than, I'm sure they might wanna get up into public participation. If any of you gentlemen in the, would like to ask a question now, while we're here, could you set the mic? No, just, just, no, no. I, I have a liberal three minutes. Usually you can go anywhere from.
My name is Fred Meyer, I'm a veteran. I worked as an engineer for 35 years for IBM. Before that, I've been in improving grounds. And I didn't have the benefit of any of this tax, see, I salute the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands. We're getting into a democracy, that's mob rule. You know, 150 years ago, what's happening down in Jefferson, they used to lynch people. Now, they're ready getting for regular lynching under this democracy theory. Like, we're a republic, but I hear people asking good questions, and I'm told, listening, we haven't got the answers yet, this top-down government. Democracy, I mean, we're a republic, it's supposed to be states, bottom-up government, not top-down, where you gotta wait until you hear what the supreme ruler says you should know. He's on the right track, he's asked three good questions tonight. And it really bothers the heck out of me about this brainwashing. Core, I understand they're issuing new textbooks to redo history. You know, people don't even know about our founders and any of that. All you hear is what's politically correct. I didn't benefit, I went through public education myself. But people who I see today do much better under parochial or private school or, whatever you call these other.
Charter.
Schools.
Charter school.
That's bottom up, all right? That allows creativity. It's brainwashing stuff, like Core, you got your own new textbooks. They mention the testing, they don't mention the education part of it.
Sir, I'll let you get back up in public participation, but this is about the veterans. This is where I want, you know.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You can, you can, you can talk again in public participation about that, but I was wanting input on, from veterans, on veteran, on this specific subject, so. Anybody else, you know? Okay, I think at this point, we just, like, as I said, I am in favor of the in-between. I should say that Kevin did call me up, and he's in favor of the default. So, since we have a motion later on in the agenda for the default, I should know if we have support for that. I, later on, this may be, I would rather not have a vote if nobody's gonna pass it.
Isn't that why we have to vote to determine whether or not we're gonna pass it?
We have it on the agenda to vote, why not vote then? That's the first step in taking it, if we don't pass the default, we can't go anywhere else. If we pass the default and it's interesting going to some other value, then we have to have a second public meeting, correct?
No, 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 if you pass the default, it's passed.
No, but then you can go on to, you can go.
No, no.
If the vote fails, then we can go to the second hearing.
Well, you can't do anything other than default without a second hearing.
That's correct.
Right.
You can, you can, the default can be chosen, can be voted on and approved after the first hearing. If you want anything other than the default, you have a second hearing to either go above or below the default. You don't have to vote, we don't have to make a decision tonight. We can make a decision to have a second hearing if we wanted to, which would allow us to go either above or below, or to the default, you know.
That's a good point, I mean.
So, we don't wanna pass the default now if we have interest in something else?
No, I don't wanna pass it, I just want to know.
I had a misconception.
Okay, it's my understanding that you have to do the default first. You have to vote on the default, and then your next hearing can be up or down.
I thought that once you voted the default, you can't go down.
Right.
You can go down, the first, within that same timeframe, that's how the districts around us did it.
I guess I'd want clarity on that, 'cause my understanding is that you can't go down. Once you, whatever level you choose.
First time, first, you know, within that certain time period before March 1st, you can choose to go down to the minimum or go move up, and then it will be effective March 1st. After that, so let's say that we went to a higher number and decided next year, March 1st, that we wanted to go down, then we could not go down.
So, you're saying up until March 1st, we can go up, down?
Up, down, whichever we want, yep.
Just once March 1st, whatever we're at, we're locked into as a minimum.
But are you talking about hearings or the resolution?
Both. Both, so you would have a hearing tonight, which we had.
Right.
Vote for the default, then our next meeting, we would have another hearing, discuss up or down, and then have a resolution prepared for whatever we decide, up or down.
So, you're saying we have to have two hearings?
If we wanna go up or down.
Yeah, if you want anything other than default, you have to have two hearings.
That's right.
But if we approve the default, we still can, if we choose, we still can have another hearing?
Yep, up until March 1st.
But then if we voted on it, won't we have to rescind that vote? If we passed it, won't we have to rescind the vote? If we voted on and say it's default?
I'm waiting for expert opinion here, because I'm saying, if we vote and make a motion today, I thought that was it, that we were gonna do the default for this year, and next year we could, next year we could figure out. If that's not the case, I'm not sure, you know, what we're holding all these meetings for.
But we can't even, you know, depending on what we're hearing, I'm here. What I'm, I thought I just heard is we have to pass the default to give ourselves the opportunity to have any of the default. We can stay at the default, or we can change. If we don't pass the default, we can't go any further, we just rejected the concept.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, it doesn't even, yeah.
I didn't say it made sense, but that's what I'm hearing.
I mean, if we were gonna vote on the default later on, and I wanted it to be higher, I would have to vote no on the default, I would think.
I mean, the resolution ends that the district clerk is gonna provide a certified copy of the resolution to Dutchess County.
Right. And then we have one more chance to go up or down, or, you know, before March 1st.
I'd like to get that clarified somehow. If this person were hearing that, first I'm hearing anyway. I'll go, do you agree with that?
If we voted, you know, it's, well, here again, if we vote stay for default, and it's the only opportunity we get, then we put ourselves in a box. We can only go default, we, there's no sense in even trying to discuss minimum or in-between or max. If we vote down default expecting to have an opportunity the next time to select one of the others, and it says, no, you had to pass the default first, we're not gonna be able to do anything. It's, you know. The only thing I see as viable to give me the opportunity to select what I like to do is to table the vote until we get a clarification.
No.
No.
Vote default.
Under parliamentary rules, I just can't figure it, if we vote and pass a resolution, we have to rescind it.
Yeah, I would think so, yes. I, I personally think if this convoluted thing has to go this way, then we should vote for the default, even though I think it should be higher, but, you know, at least get something done. If, we only have one December meeting, then comes January, there's a couple, we're in the budget season, things are gonna go. We need to do this tonight.
I disagree.
I don't care if you disagree.
I don't think we know. I don't think we know, I'm not sitting here with a whole lot of confidence that we know, and, you know, nothing, I mean, this is a gray area for all of us, but I don't think we know what we're doing.
This came right from the, I mean, it comes right from the paperwork, I have paperwork.
Have you got something that, yeah, I'm just looking for a website that might have something.
What have we got written down that tells us the process?
Well, I was under the impression that if we pass the default tonight, that was done.
Yes.
I don't know what anybody else.
And then if we wanted to go up, we could have a second hearing.
Later on, we could have a second.
So, then we'd have to pass the lower one?
Lower or higher.
But the confusion would be if we vote default now, can we go back to minimum?
Exactly, exactly, that seems a little bit.
Well, if the default, if we vote a default down.
We're not allowed to go down.
Yes, it's done. Up until March 1st, you can go either way.
Have you got something written down there?
I'm looking for it right now.
Right, well, the likelihood of people voting for default now and then coming back next meeting and saying, oh, I want minimum, I want less.
I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna suggest we leave the resolution for default on the agenda and that we vote later on, and deal with it, deal with it by, you know, asking the state what, you know. And if everybody else is fine with the default, except for me, then, then it's the default, that's fine, then it's done. So.
I'm just curious, the rest of the board, have you really queried the people in your neighborhoods of what they thought? 'Cause I went and queried a lot of the neighbors, and yes, I'm a veteran, but I called war, and I would gladly went to war if that had come about. But we're also, as you stated, republic representatives of every, of the people of the district. So, I went up and down my street asking, do they support? What is, how high do you support? And it came down fairly clearly, they did not want to see anything increasing their taxes above 2%.
That's alone.
That's, in my neighborhood, and the people I asked, and I asked about 35 people, and I had over 20 of them tell me they did not want to go above 20%, or 2%. They did say yes, they do want to support, that is an overwhelming yes, they want us to pass something. That is true.
Pass the default.
For the default, they looked at my calculations, it takes us over the 2%.
All right. Before I can make a decision, I need clarification on these numbers. The numbers that I quickly jotted down as Wayne gave them to us indicates that the minimum increase would be somewhere around a .7% increase in the tax rate. For the default, it would be somewhere around a 1.4% increase in the tax rate.
1.4?
1.4?
Somewhere around 1.4, according to the numbers I was given by Wayne, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, I mean, this came from the county, so there's no doubt in my mind that you definitely have to approve the default first, and then you can choose to go up or down prior to March 1st.
Can you read it?
You got something there, read it to us.
It doesn't read it exactly like that.
How exactly does it read?
That's the question lately, but I've, that's what I've heard from every source there is.
Is there something there that you can read, or is that the?
Well, my question isn't so much procedural, which is whether we vote for the default and then come back and modify it.
If it's 1.4, I have, I'm for it.
Well, my, my objection is that by the time we pass the budget next spring and pass along a roughly 2% increase, there's gonna be lots of members of the public that are gonna see a 3.5%. that are going to see a three and a half percent increase, three point four percent. And we've been hovering around a two percent increase for several years. So, based on that, I would prefer to phase it in over two years, which is entirely possible by passing the minimum this year and moving to default next year. This is the idea I've had ever since we.
Wait, what is the current rate? Thirty-seven?
First heard about this.
Thirty-seven point five three for Hyde Park.
The numbers I have are that for Hyde Park, it would, it, we're currently at thirty-seven point five three. The minimum was thirty-seven point seven nine. The default would be thirty-eight point oh six.
Right.
So, unless my math is wrong.
So the default would be?
It's a multiplier though.
And not Tony Stark, it could be wrong. I calculate point six nine percent increase and one point four one.
I'm going to recommend that we leave the motion on the agenda, that we vote on it, and we'll see, see where we go from there.
That's fine, let's get the move, the meeting moving.
Yep. All right, this time, I'd like a motion for public participation, please.
So moved, second?
Any discussion? All in favor? We're now in public participation. Anybody who would like to speak to us, please come up to the, the mic.
I'm sort of amazed at the decision-making process that goes on. And I have been in this school district for over thirty-five years. And no one, I mean, no one has ever called me to ask my opinion on a decision that affects me deeply. And no one called me on this veterans' benefits. That's, that surprises me. It doesn't surprise me, because two years ago, I stood before the Board of Education and I presented twenty-one points on what should be included in a textbook to make it what I feel is presentable to a student. And if you go around and ask the public, I, I get the same answers. There are five things that involve education, the parent, the teacher, the child, the facilities, and what else? And only one person out of over fifty people could tell me the textbook, okay? So evidently, the, if decisions are being made without consulting the public, and the public doesn't seem care enough, I guess then it doesn't matter what decision you make. And exclusively, just speaking to textbooks, if you go and talk about them, there's nothing left after you present the parent, the teacher, the child, the facility, but the textbook. And having taught in the school, not being a certified teacher, but taught at a private school, that was the biggest problem, was the textbook. And by the way, three years ago, I did review the calculus, the chemistry and the biology book of Roosevelt High School. And they, they're all, they all at that time were lacking and being complete. So if you're going to go to this new STEM program, I recommend you to go to somebody outside of the school and ask them, whether they're a chemist, physicist, engineer, whatever, about how you're going to pick your textbooks. Because when the kid goes home, he doesn't have anything but that textbook. And in addition, I'm amazed that the teachers wouldn't look to this, because it would make their job easier. So all I'm going to say is, when you're making these decisions, I think you should call, I see one person up there, I don't know him personally, that did call his public to find out what decision he should make at these board meetings. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ken. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Yeah, hello, my name's George Augustine. I just wanted to say a few words about the veterans' tax exemption. You know, in my, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not really big into politics, but we all know there's enough that goes on in this world. And, you know, I came to the last meeting, and, you know, I thought that, you know, between that meeting and this meeting, the facts would be pulled together. And you guys and gals would have enough information to make an informed decision tonight and not, you know, delay this again. And, you know, I'm not optimistic that the next meeting is going to be, have enough information to make an informed decision. I mean, I'm a Cold War veteran, I'm not a combat veteran, I don't have a disability, but I'm proud to say I'm an American, and I'm proud that these guys in the room that are combat veterans, that have experienced, you know, physical and mental trauma, you know. My hat's off to them, because we wouldn't be here in the capacity that we're here tonight if it wasn't for the men and women who served our country in that capacity. Yeah, I'm a Cold War veteran, and, but you know what? I would find a way, find a way to pay the dollars that are needed to support these veterans. I would find a way, and I think everybody can find a way for the small increase that we're looking at here. And, you know, this politicking and delaying, not having the facts, meeting after meeting, I, I just don't get it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Mike Athanas, to answer an earlier question about a veteran is, a decree of the US Congress, if you serve one day active duty, you're considered a veteran. And as soon as you go, you, you join, you're on active duty. If you're in a reserves, you have a hundred and eighty days active duty of basic training and advanced training. So, there's no, there's no criteria that you're not a veteran. If you're in the military, either joining or drafted, and you spend one day active duty, that's all you need to be a veteran. That's, that's what Congress says. That's what the American Legion uses as their definition of a veteran. To this vote again tonight, seems like it's a Pelosi deal all over again. You have to pass it to know what's in it. You know, I, you hear that all the time anymore, you, you got the information. You know, basically what he says is going to be point six or, or one point four. Wayne, I'm not picking on you, but the two hundred fifty thousand dollar value is, is, you know, above a lot of people's possession or ownership. And it's most likely going to be in the point four, point six, point eight range, region. I haven't spoke to my neighbors, I, I speak to the guys in the Legion and the other events, they're all for it, as far as I know. I was at a county Legion meeting last night, and Nelson, Eddie Nelson didn't say anything negative against it. He can't make it here tonight, he was going to speak, and he, he was for it. He wanted to speak for it. And he's basically, all the towns that have passed it, I don't think there's been too much grumbling going on. I haven't heard about Wobblers, they were the first ones to pass it. Has, has any feedback come to the Hyde Park Town Board about it, or the Board of Education? I haven't heard anything about it. It can't be that much of an impact. Yes, it's going to increase the tax rate a little bit, but every year, like he says, it goes up two or three percent anyway. So, another percent on top of that, it's not going to be an earthshaker. And I, I think you ought to pass at least the default and get the thing rolling anyway. And that's about all I got to say. Thank you very much. I hope you're passing it.
With respect, this is not a bank buster. This is less than a dollar a day, even at the max, for the taxpayer. I was at the recent Veterans' Day ceremonies, okay? I was at the Hyde Park Town Hall, it was way over a hundred people there. Vast majority were not veterans. Without exception, everyone that I spoke to, non-veterans, wanted this passed, wanted this passed to the max. If we are that worried about the taxes for next year, this two percent or whatever, okay? If it is that critical, perhaps then we should forget the whole thing, and let's think about cutting. Let's start looking at things in this district, big time to cut. We've given you everything in the past, buses, windows, football fields, without exception. We're asking for something very, very small as a sign of respect to the people who put you there, who allow the district to exist, the veterans. You got to do the right thing here. Stop this procrastinating, this nonsense, this politicking, this evasion. Vote on a default. Do it tonight. Let Hyde Park be a shining star here, an example. That you do what's right first, and everything else will fall into place. That's all I'm saying. Don't delay. Don't delay. You've already talked about this, you have some numbers, you can massage them, all this stuff, but you got to do the right thing. Because the veterans, okay, remember, the kids that you educate, okay? They're going to be the ones who will hear about this too. Maybe someday when they're eighteen, and they go into the service and hopefully come back to Hyde Park, and they find out that Hyde Park did this to their veterans. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Before you know who I am right here, I want to apologize for some of the criticism we get, because you don't have near the, the power of any of this stuff that people think you do. You know, the teachers' union not represented here, they have way more power than any of you, all right? First of all, the assessment rules, a lot of this depends on that. Now, what's happened to this area? We got Maris College and Dutchess, you know, and all these, but the biggest one is Maris College, buying up all the assessed properties and then renting it out at a great profit and paying no taxes on it. February Fire District, you know, we had the increase for all these big equipment and everything. For what? To take care of them? They don't pay any fire tax. We pay the fire tax. All right, then there's a school budget hearing. So that's a joke too, because you don't, how many, has anyone here voted on the salaries and benefits? It comes down from the state, right?
No.
No, it's a negotiation.
Okay. So what we're voting, people are voting on, which is unfair to the students and you people, is the extracurricular activities. Ninety-five percent of the budget is salaries and benefits, which you don't have any control over at all. And I, and from what I understand now, you got to wait for the federal government to give a little bit of, uh, uh, direction to, to the public education. Because I don't think the State Education Department, that you have any association with it. Can someone answer to that? What connection you have with State Department of Education? Probably not, right? Because you get a federal.
We can, we can, but the way this works is you talk, we end public participation, and then we answer.
All right, my understanding is, when you accept federal, federal money, you also accept their control over your whole process, all right? Now, I think it's unfair, school budget, first of all, that should be better defined as what it is. It's not for salary and budgets, that's not determined by the school board, but you guys get blamed for it. What, what there are important things, whether you buy new buses or you pay for maintenance to keep the old ones going. And then where you do have discretion is, when you get reimbursed by the state over a five-year period for new buses and stuff, how you spend that money. So that's about all the discretion you have on the budget. So, I mean, that's, that, that's, on this tax exemption business, that's my biggest concern is, do you have any avenue to address the state? And does the state have any say? The state certainly can, can provide regulation on, on public institutions, like Maris College, where they have stuff, rental property, we're in the property business, that they should be paying taxes, because that directly affects, what these people are concerned about is the taxes. Because if you don't have any tax exempt property, I mean, if you have all tax exempt property, like February fourth district, I mean, yeah, then, then that, that affects it, the, your tax bill, all right? Anyway, you, you, you know, I'm sorry you had to put up with people like me, but a lot of people who are independent thinking, who haven't been brainwashed by a national brainwashing, you know, like this LAPD thing, where you got to top down, you know? Is there any, any feedback that you have to change the curriculum or input to it? No, it's all top down, brainwash, you know? This country, this flag represents a unique experiment in, in a human freedom and exercise. And instead, we're drifting the other way, where we got to wait for the federal government to tell us, like one person said, you got to read it, you got to experience before you can know what's in it. And that's what bothers me and other people like me, all right? And as a veteran, I was in frontline combat in Europe, and I had no, I was eighteen years old when, when I got drafted, and I was eighteen years old when the war ended. Twenty miles from Berlin, we had to sit there for ten days for the federal government to allow the Russians to take Berlin, when we could have just went in there. They were trying to surrender to us, all right? So that's what bothers me, is we're, we're losing our, we're not, because there's other, other. Public education is not the only avenue to education, all right? So, anyway. Thank you for this opportunity, I'm glad of that. And I do want to apologize for a lot of criticism that you people are receiving, the things you have no control over. And things that you do have control over, people in, up above in the state and the federal level don't care about hearing from you, because you get the same kind of abuse that taxpayers feel like they're getting. Thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to? Fran.
Hi, Fran White. I just want to say, whether I agree or disagree with the veterans who spoke, I do not agree with or appreciate anyone who will stand up here, who will benefit from this vote to make a statement that a one percent increase is not a big deal. Because I assure you, to some people in this district, it is a big deal. It's not really that big of a deal to me, but I do know a lot of people, that that is a big deal. So if you benefit from it, you shouldn't make statements like that for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else? I have a motion to close public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now, anyone who want to comment?
Um, yeah, actually, my, my research group over here has found, you know, and if you can believe what you read on the attorney's website, there is.
We found that too. Go ahead, read it up.
Von Schonek and King Attorneys. And under, they have School District Near State allows school districts to obtain and offer significant real property tax exemption to veterans, January of two thousand fourteen. Under that, they have a subtitle for procedure. And if you'll allow me, or tolerate my reading skills. To enact the basic veterans exemption with a statutory default exemption cap levels, the district must first hold a public hearing, which we have done. Then the district must adopt a resolution authorizing the exemption with the statutory default exemption cap levels.
We just read that, yeah.
If a school district desires to change the statutory default exemption cap levels, the district must hold a second public hearing and pass a separate resolution authorizing local exemption cap levels. And then it goes on to speak about the Gold Star. And then it goes on to speak about the Gold Star Parents.
I think that's pretty clear.
I think that supports what Wayne was saying.
Right.
And-
The power of the internet.
The power of the internet.
Yeah, he just showed the same thing to me.
Okay.
Legal, I don't know, but, but-
Yeah.
Does the same thing.
Well, this doesn't really address that. It just says that you have to have a hearing.
Best part, that was legal advice without cost.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Makes it as valuable as it costs.
As we paid for it, yes, it's worth every nickel we paid for.
But sometimes when you, when you get advice that you're not paying for, they give you the advice that they mean. It's when you are paying for it, they give you the advice you're willing to pay for, or it'll go elsewhere.
Okay.
Money can influence the decision and the advice you get. I, I just wanted to make it clear, you know, I, I kept hearing the word politicking. I, I don't know that we are politicking. I, I feel that at the end of the hearing, where we were was, we had the facts we wanted to, to base a judgment and to make a decision. What suddenly became cloudy was the process that needed to be followed to get to where we wanted to go. And the exposure that if we followed, followed a process that we weren't unclear about, it might put us into a box we couldn't change. The information we requested, we were given. The information that told us how much it would cost and, at the various categories and comparisons that it would be equivalent in all five districts, because we've had experiences in the past on regular budgets because of equalization rates, where we passed a budget and announced a certain increase, and then it was blown out of the water because of these equalization rates and changes. So the process, the facts were clear, the process was unclear. I believe that what was just read to us clarifies the process. So that we have a point now, when we go to make a decision, we understand what that decision makes. That we can pass a default today and, and stick with that, or if we want to come up with one of the other three alternatives, we must pass the default today and hold a second public hearing and then have a vote where we specifically state the amount of exemption we want to grant. And as long as that's done by April first, March, March first, that'll be where Hyde Park stands as far as the exemptions with the veterans. Now, the other thing I want to make clear is I, I understand the man from the VFW identified what a veteran is. And maybe we had to make it clear, you know, that, a veteran is a veteran. What had to be made clear is, if you're a veteran, doesn't mean you're gonna get exemption. What we're dealing with in this particular vote are that subclass of veterans that served during wartime, served in a war zone, served during wartime in a war zone, and received a disability. It's a subclass of veterans that would be affected by our vote. Because if you had some other classification, there's no percentage of exemption, no percentage of reduction of your assessed value that you could get, qualifying.
Anyone else like to comment?
I, I would like to say, the, I, I find this very difficult myself, because quite frankly, I don't need an exemption. I'm a veteran, I'm a disabled veteran. I, I wish there was a means test of some kind on this exemption, that the people who really need it the most got the most benefit from this. I also would like to point out that the people that really need, the veterans that really need relief probably don't own homes. There's, there's probably more of them that need a helping hand than those that, that actually own property. So, earlier in the evening, when I was trying to say there's difference in, in veterans and veterans, that, you know, I'm, I consider myself a different type of veteran, you know? I never left New Jersey, as I said, I'm meeting before. I was trained as a forward controller. I could've been in the jungles, you know, but I didn't go. And, and, yeah, it's, to me, it's a shame that the benefit is for all, even those that don't need it. And, and I'm glad that we've, I think, settled that we can vote on the default later on. And then on other, I would like to, it'll take me too long, but there are things in the school district that we have no control over. We have unfunded mandates, we have lots of things that are, come down from the federal government, from the state. But we do negotiate our contracts, and we, we negotiate them quite strongly and vigorously, and we've gone years without a contract until we got what we felt was a fair and equitable contract as far as salaries and benefits. One that, a contract that is fair, not only to the union people, but also to the district. So, you may think that unions run the, the, the school district, or the state, or whatever, and part of that may be true, or it may be more true years ago, but I think there is more of a spirit of mutual benefits and cooperation when the negotiations occur. And sure, are there, are there, are there differences, and do we argue, and do we, you know, go to mediation? And, yes, we do. But we try to do the best that we can. So there is, it's, it's, it would take a week probably to explain, but there are, there are many, many things that people up here on this board do that. And when we negotiate, and when we decide what programs to, to run, what books to have, and what, we, we control a great deal of that. And it, it's a really big responsibility. So I'll just leave it at that. If any, nobody else anything on, we will-
Move on.
Oh, sure.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for your service and your courage. And I, I'm gonna go for default, I'll tell you right now. Just want to make a couple thoughts, and I appreciate this gentleman in front, I forgot his name. But, I mean, we do have a lot of other concerns in this town with taxes, with school taxes, with talent taxes going up, county tax maybe will be flat. Every fire, I'm in that district, I know all about fire taxes, so the community has other burden, burdens to worry about, and it's hard. One percent may be hard for a lot of people. But in most cases, I think the two fifty is kind of a false reading too. I think it should be lower. Most people aren't gonna pay that eighty dollars a year, it'll be more like forty to sixty. And the other comment I want to make, I, I, I think the governor did this for reasons, political reasons, I shouldn't make those comments here, but I'm gonna. I think this should be, the board's gonna vote, but I think it should've been a public vote, like our budget, yearly budget. Let the entire community vote on this. That's the way my feelings are. And I, believe me, I bet you the entire community would vote very well on this, and probably vote on the higher levels of it. Our hands are tied on that, it's up to seven of us to make that decision, so. Thanks.
Yeah, I believe the four fifty, four fifty eight A, is that the law? I think it precludes the public vote, but, yeah, I, I, certainly. But on the other hand, we get elected to make decisions, and at this point, you know, we need to make a decision on this. So, I'd like to move on now to-
Doug.
Yep.
One, one clarification.
Sure.
Wayne included examples based on a, a home of a value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the examples are useful, whether that's truly an example of an average home in any of our communities or not. But the calculations can still be instructive. So, the, the fact that it's gonna change the tax rate by roughly one point four percent is irrespective of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value. I just wanted to make that clear. That two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value was merely for the point of examples.
Right. Right, it's depending on your assessed value, that would be a different number. Correct, correct.
But we were supposed to, we initially thought we were gonna take the median range, and I, I think a lot of us don't believe that two fifty is the median range, uh, assessed value in it, at least.
But an individual-
Maybe in other areas of the district.
But I think an individual who knows what the value of their house is can prorate the rate based on that.
Right.
If I got a two hundred thousand dollar house, not a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, they're gonna be right in the ballpark by taking eighty percent of the figures we presented here.
Pretty close, yep.
So the information can be used by anybody out there that wants to get a judgment as to what the personal effect on them is gonna be. I, um, yeah. The other, the other thing is, and, you know, for the veterans that are renting, if the homeowner or the property owner is not a veteran, they're gonna see no benefit whatsoever, because obviously that person is passing on, as part of the, the cost to determine a rent, what they're paying in taxes. So if, if I'm a veteran and owns my own home, I'm gonna get a break. If I fit the categories of wartime, war zone, and disability. But if I'm, if I'm a veteran that's living in an apartment, as much as, as much as we'd like to recognize them, we're not. And, you know, I'm not sure what the breakdown in this community is. Are we, are we going to be affecting eighty percent of the veterans in this town? Are we gonna be affecting twenty percent of the veterans in this town? I think it's closer to eighty than twenty, but there are gonna be a significant number, twenty percent to me is still a significant number of veterans that were not recognized and not benefiting. So, you know, I, this setup that the governor's come up with to recognize veterans is a little too exclusive, to my mind, because it eliminates an awful lot of men that have given a service and, and sacrifices for us that deserve to be recognized and deserve to get some benefit. And I feel bad that they're not gonna benefit from that. And some of them are probably in the worst categories. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to have a motion for the consent agenda, please. Have a mo, huh? Was there another one up there? Oh, I'm sorry. Skip the head. Have a motion for nine point one. The draft budget development calendar and budget parameters. So hopefully everybody's had a chance to review those.
We all need it.
Are there, are there any problems on the, the first one? Items to be considered? Revenue, district will continue to maximize all revenues. Two, district has seen an increase in state aid in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, but this year also, and is hopeful that this trend will continue. Am I looking at last year's? I'm looking at the other one. Let me look at the new one. You know, computers are great if you're looking at the right stuff, you know? Ah, there we go. So, items considered, revenue, the district will continue to maximize all revenues. District received an increase in state aid in late March, which was late for us the last year, and is hopeful this trend will continue, and considering they have a big surplus, it should. The investment vehicles will yield the highest possible interest rates. Due to the continued severe downturn of the economy, district investments will continue to yield less, which I think is probably still gonna be true. Grants will be increased particularly for the Universal PKA, you know? The district continues to monitor all economic indicators. And then on the expenditure side, all planned personnel shifts and reductions shall be, shall represent actual employees to be reduced. All additional expenses, unemployment and benefits will be incorporated into these figures. The second one is enrollment will continue to decline. I'd like to say it's, it hasn't changed, but we continue to lose about a hundred students a year. So I've been on the board twelve years, and that's twelve hundred kids left than when I started.
Hey Doug, I think most of us were here when we discussed this and approached, reached the point where we developed this as draft.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder whether, in the interest of expedience, we could ask for comment on what's written with what walked through them?
Oh, that's fine. I, I was reading it for the, for the camera there, but that's fine.
The, the information's on our website and available for-
Okay.
Public-
That's fine with me, and we could discuss it again at the next meeting. That'd be, that works, that works for me.
I, I just bring it up because I know we've got a long agenda ahead of us.
Okay. I am open. That leads me to second reading, an adoption of policy, policy fifty-four sixty. This is a upgrade to the regulation on child abuse, neglect, and maintenance regulations. These are wordings recommended by NIFSA. Have a motion, please. Do you accept that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Six.
Did we finally make it to the consent agenda? Yes, we did. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Hello.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I, I have a comment. I don't know if it's discussion. We are authorizing coaching stipends in this consent agenda, and I think in light of the fact the state of New York has deemed cheerleading as a sport, that the cheerleader advisor should be a coach and should be paid, the equivalent stipends as the coach for football, basketball, baseball, is a half, it's half of what a, a coach that coaches fifteen kids gets twice as much as someone who coaches thirty kids. So I, I don't quite see that as fair. And I would like to recommend that we change that stipend and, and recognize the cheerleaders' advisors as official coaches.
Well, we understand, since we have, as we mentioned before, we have a contract with the Teachers Association. And included in that contract are the positions that are listed as coaches, and the stipends are paid. So what we would have to do is get into negotiation, which I would support, with the teachers' union, to discuss the change from, the cheerleading positions from advisors to coaches, and to negotiate a stipend that's more suitable for the position that they hold.
If, if-
I agree.
If we have agreement here, I can contact the HPTA and ask if they are willing to enter into negotiations for this single item. Again, they would have to be willing to come to the table, they would have to be willing to negotiate for this. Certainly, I can't emphasize enough how much I recognize and have for many, 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 many years, that cheerleading is indeed a bona fide sport and should have a certified coach. And we certainly have had an incredible experience with our cheerleading team. They are national award winners for multiple years in a row. If anyone has seen the athletic competition and performances that our cheerleaders do, there would be no doubt in their mind that this should be accredited as much a sport as gymnastics or, or basketball, football, you name it, lacrosse, anything. It, it is a sport. I'm, I'm very pleased that the state has finally recognized that, and I would like to move forward and ask the teachers' union if they'd be willing to open the contract to recognize this.
All right, anything else on the-
Yeah, I just wanna, there's donations listed here, and I think there's one in particular, Don Vith, Vith Enterprises, a donation of material and labor in excess of fifty-eight hundred dollars that went for the multipurpose storage unit, AKA concession sand. You know, and I think, you know, Don's a local guy, and I think that, you know, kudos to him for, you know, for putting his money where his mouth is and supporting the district, and thank you to Don.
And hopefully people remember that, was it two months ago, we, we brought Don, as well as John Golden and several others in, and publicly recognized them, and so, yeah, I, I agree. Perry?
Any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Hey Doug.
Yeah?
Do we need to authorize Greer to open negotiations for that line item?
I don't think so. I think she can, she can just, you can just talk to her, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next. Let me get down there. May I have a motion for twelve point one, special education placements, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I reviewed the packet that was presented and recommend its adoption.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for twelve point two, agreements to provide special education services?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's see, where am I? I have a motion for twelve point three. No, we don't need a motion, right? Yeah, we do. Motion for, oh, for first reading of policies eighty-six twenty, eighty-six twenty R, and eighty-six twenty E. These are the outdoor sign usage, outdoor sign usage regulation and the request form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for the agreement, uh, twelve point four agreement where the HPTA is listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, this is an ongoing, um, this, uh, issue concerning teacher evaluations, right? So this is, is there, is this a change in any way from, from prior?
I think this-
Not substantial. It's just dates.
This is what we're doing already, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was minor modifications in dates, but the minute you touch it, you have to re-adopt it, uh.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
Yeah, no, unfortunately.
We already vote? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Let me get back here. All right. There we are. Have a motion for twelve point five, the alternative tax exemption default resolution, please. As listed here in the, uh, in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'm not a voting member of the Board of Education, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of the veterans. And I want, also want to publicly thank my son and daughter-in-law, who are both active duty military. And my daughter-in-law has already had two tours in Afghanistan. So thank you, veterans, for everything you do. Have done, sorry.
Done, yes. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Doug, you cut off debate pretty fast there.
What's that?
You cut off debate pretty fast there.
We'll, we'll allow you to debate then. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I, for the next agenda, I'd like to put a motion on there to change this to the minimum. Because my idea stands that I would prefer to phase this in over two years. Furthermore, that calls for another, um, public hearing on the matter.
It would be, my opinion, that that would have to be a decision of the board, not just you. So if-
I can request the resolution.
But the, that doesn't mean it's, it gets put on.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. I can request any resolution I want. The fact that we do or do not put a public hearing on the agenda is a matter for the full board. But I can certainly request a resolution for the agenda.
A request re- implies an approval.
Are you saying that you're going to block it?
I would, yes.
You don't have the right to block that.
I, I'm just saying that I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to put that on the, the agenda.
Uh, well, I'm going to second his, because I do think we need to hear from the public on how far. I've went around asked, but I didn't get an answer from the rest of you, how much you went around and asked your people around you, where you live and what they think. And I would like to get how is the public feels on this. I was sitting there working with Wayne and what my tax increase will be. My tax increase will be one point six percent. It is under the two percent with what I asked around. But I do think we need to find out what the public has to say. So I don't think we should just, just dismiss it. Yes, we've had, and I do appreciate all the veterans. But I think now that the word went out, we went to the default, we do have to give the public a chance to come back and say whether or not they agree. More likely, I doubt that will happen, but I think we, we need to at least give them their chance.
I would say we've had four meetings already. We've asked the public to come. We've had this open hearing. If we did everything and processed every single thing that was controversial and went out and talked to every single community member, we'd never get anything done. We need to get this done.
I have a question first and then I would like to make a comment. Can one resolution be, be entered with the actual line item decided at the next meeting as to whether we're looking to move from the default to the minimum, to the max, or to some, to some other value in between? And fill that in as part of the debate or discussion we have after we have a public hearing?
Yeah, I would think that the, I mean, couldn't, it seemed like, yeah, a, a resolution could be adopted or could be proposed and approved whether it's up or down. I mean, yeah, you just need to have some language and, and fill in the blank.
The language, I think, would be, be the same for whatever we choose and just after, after our discussion.
Yeah, just filling in the values.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think so. And you can't do anything until you have another public hearing.
Correct.
We can't, we can't take it up, we can't take it down without another public hearing.
I, I would like to know if there is support for a minimum.
There is support.
To move the mo- the minimum.
My bigger question would be, is there support for a second public hearing for movement either up or down?
I'm okay with that one, too.
I would support it simply, it, it, you know, we've, 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 we're not taking, we're not, we've made the step that we're doing something. I mean, I don't think we, at this point, we can, I mean, I don't know whether we can take away what we've done. We can reduce it, or we can increase it, or we can leave it the same.
But we can't, but at, at this point, I believe we're committed to having a veteran's-
That's my expectation at this point, is that we've, we've committed to having the veterans exemption at some value.
Right.
I'm in favor of, of continuing the discussion. I don't think there's any particular cost other than a little personal time. And I would encourage everyone to go out and try to get as much information from, from our constituents as to, you know, what, what the public feels. And I think it's very difficult. I think anybody who may be in a position to oppose this, and I'm not saying there's crowds that oppose it, but I think there are a lot of people in our area that are living close to the edge that a little bit has the potential of making a difference. And they're not going to, they're not going to come to this meeting and speak. I know they're not. I mean, it's, you're just not going to do that. I mean, veterans, you guys, you, you did it all. We're here because of what you've done. But at the same time, there are people who, you know, if it's the difference between somebody being, being able to keep their house or not, that's not, that's not a place I want to take anyone.
Furthermore, I'd like to understand the process that we need to follow in order to enable the, the Gold Star parent exemption. That's the biggest priority that I have in this matter. Second only to the fact that whatever we do, we should phase it in over time. So I would ask that, uh, you know, our advisors tell us the proper procedure in terms of how do we get to the point where we can enable the Gold Star exemption?
It's a resolution.
So we don't have to enable all of the other exemptions?
You can do it at minimum, the default, maximum, wherever you can. The Gold Star is totally separate resolution. Microphone two.
So we can enable Gold Star without any of the other exemptions?
Hearings have nothing to do with Gold Star?
Uh, just one other comment. I'd, I'd ask Wayne because it was unclear to me, but the, I've heard the two percent mentioned or it's under two percent just now. And typically, right now and over the last couple of years, that leads us all to focus on the tax cap. All right. The tax cap is based on, after discussions with Wayne, the actual tax levy. Since the tax levy will be the same, it's just shifting as to who's paying the money. Anything we do with the veterans exemption will not put us in jeopardy of going above or below the tax cap and qualifying for the other things and benefits we have. And I would like to add a sub-comment there. Statement was made that we've been given everything we've asked for over the years, implying that we've continued to expand everything within the district, which is so far from the truth. Because for six years, we have struggled with keeping the tax levy down to something that the community voted and agreed upon was something they could afford. And it was not done without great sacrifice in terms of teachers, in terms of courses, and in terms of other sundry types of things we provided with the students. It's only been in the last two years that we've been in a position to start to provide extra courses, as we heard today. This, uh, expansion of the STEM program to provide a better opportunity for our kids to prepare and knowledgeable of expanding into a career as a result of their education year. But over the years, we've had to give up a lot of courses or modify the courses we've offered or actually, uh, change the requirements for those courses. And we've had to downsize the number of teachers as we've downsized students. So there's been a lot we've sacrificed to stay within the guidelines of the two percent tax cap or a workable, uh, budget over the last five years as, as the recession has spread. So we've been given the, a positive vote on the budgets we presented. But the budgets had, each one of them almost included significant cuts in services, cuts in personnel, and cuts in some things we would have liked to continue to provide to our students.
Just going to try one more time to probably anger everybody up here. But we get elected to make decisions. We, we make budget decisions that cost people money. We make a lot of decisions that, you know, we're, we're asked to make. That's why we're elected to make them. And we don't, you know, when we have budget hearings and we ask the public to come talk to us, we, we make those decisions and, and yes, not many people come. And yes, it's great that Jeff went around his neighborhood and asked, but I still think it's up to us to make the decision, you know? We don't get paid for it, but I mean, we're, we're, um, we're elected, we're elected by the public to make the decision for the district.
And we provide another path besides coming to these meetings, Doug. I, I believe when I make this statement, on the district website, there is a direct method of contact established for anybody in the community that wants to talk individually to any board member and discuss the site, and whether it be an email address or a phone number. And I, I, I understand there are many, many people in the public that are totally uncomfortable in coming to a meeting like that and standing in front of people and talking about what their feelings are. But I would like to emphasize there's still another path that they want to talk to us, and that's to contact a board member individually.
And, and I think we all get phone calls. I get phone calls, I get emails, I get lots of stuff. And that's why I use the, but at the end of the day, I have to make the decision.
Doug, I think that there's support here for another public hearing on the matter. I'm not necessarily interested in dragging this out to get more public opinion. But the process that's been described to me, as I understand it, is A, you decide whether or not you're going to make the exemption.
Right, and we-
And then the second step is to decide what the exemption is. I'm merely asking that we follow through. I want to grant the default exemption. However, I don't want to do it all in one year. I also want to come back and talk about the Gold Star program. So I don't see any point in railroading this through. The fact of the matter is, we don't have to have this decision made until March. I would say that we're not dragging our feet.
We just passed the resolution to be sent to the state. How, how, how much clearer can that be?
What's got to be clear is the amount of the exemption.
We, it says the default. That's what the resolution says. Read the resolution.
You've already heard the, the, the legal opinion, which says to get to anything other than, to get an opportunity to select anything other than the default, you have to, you have to vote for the default to start, then hold a second hearing, and then have a second vote to modify that.
You don't have to hold a second. You don't have to.
To get to anything else.
Then that's good enough.
To get to anything else, you have to have a second.
If you want the default.
Right. But how are we going to know if there's support for any other value but the default unless we hold the meeting?
I'm only one guy, so.
Well, I, I, you know, I, we haven't taken a poll here, but I, I think that there's support for a second public hearing.
Want to throw a vote? Do, do we really need to put a res- resolution on the current agenda to put it on the next agenda? Or?
All right, well.
Well, I, I support default as, as so, but I-
Doug, if you, if you feel that one-
I have no problem with another meeting.
I don't need that. Have we got four here that say that?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five. Five people support another hearing to discuss whether we want to modify the default to some other value.
Do you want the hearing on a board night, or do we want to?
When do you want?
Let's, let's run the same format that we ran tonight.
Yeah.
In December.
Okay. This is a, although you think it's a republic up here, it's a democracy. So if, if that's what the board wants, then that's, that's what we'll do. That's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion for twelve point seven?
Twelve point six, right?
Twelve point six. Thought we just did that, wait, oh.
No, that's, you didn't do that one yet.
Yeah, what is?
That's a letter to-
It's a letter to the governor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. I'm distracted. Twelve point six, which is a, a resolution to the, um, well, let me see. May I have a motion, please, first? And a second?
Second.
All right. And this, any discussion? Discussion, this is a, a resolution to send to Governor Cuomo about the fact that he proposed these, uh, nice exemption for veterans without giving us the money for it. So, um, all those in favor? Opposed? Fine. Now we're twelve point seven. Doug, I think legally, we should wait to send that letter until after the next hearing. Because that could change. What, no, what? Send it and then send it again?
No, we've already committed to money, so we can complain about the back of the side of the money.
Yeah, the letter doesn't say how, or the, the, it doesn't say how much.
And include some of the other things he did just before election, but.
Well, yeah. All right, let's move on to twelve point seven. May I have a motion for twelve point seven, creation of position?
So moved.
Second.
As noted here, all right. Any discussion?
Um, just, okay. I, I see, it looks like we're creating a couple of positions here that are, that are, um-
Sorry. I meant to do that, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. This is a very unusual situation, speaking of state ed. Actually, unusual and state ed kind of go hand in hand sometimes. But, um, a lot of the money that the State Education Department gets, they've determined that they want to dole out in competitive grants. And as you know from our discussions about the UPK grant, um- And as you know, from our discussions about the UPK grant, it's an enormous amount of work to go after this funding. So, a couple of years ago, New York State had the Strengthening Teaching and Learning Grant. And certainly, you know, for us to get a piece of this pie, we have to drop everything we're doing, stand on our heads, write, you know, 50-page grant applications. Well, for the STIO grant, we collaborated with Dutchess County Bosse's, and we wrote a successful grant. And it was a two-year grant. Well, last year was year one of the grant, and because of the design and a whole host of reasons, our teachers were really not able or motivated to access what was offered through the grant. So, we wound up with a large chunk of money, about $70,000 left over from last year, coupled with what we were getting this year, and no means of getting this strengthening teaching and learning program in place. Basically, the design of the grant is to develop your own in-house professional development center for a year. That, that is something that requires a couple of full-time people to do. So, we were faced with a situation where we have access to $155,000 to pay teachers and pay for professional developers and all kinds of things that we could access and spend $155,000, and no means of pulling it together. We mentioned before that in order to get the UPK grant, you know, Cora was pretty much tied up 24/7 for quite a few weeks. So, we were looking, and this, this money sunsets on July 1st of 2015, and it's November. So, somebody needs to drop everything that they're doing in their personal life and make this happen. So, what we did was, I approached Cora and the directors and said, "Are you willing to take this on so that we can access this $155,000, knowing full well that this means nights and weekends?" I can tell you, we begin most of our days here at, between 7:30 and 8 o'clock at night, and we're out of here late, and sometimes later than other times. So, there is no way to start this whole teacher center-type professional development training program, program that needs to be implemented starting tomorrow, and can only go on until, you know, June 30th. So, while it's, seems like, oh my goodness, we're giving central office administrators money, well, no, it's not coming out of taxpayers. Well, unless you consider federal money, but that's another story. But unless somehow we, we create a condition where somebody is willing to take this on so that we can even access this money for our teachers to have this training, it wasn't going to happen. So, now, Cora and Jen and Kim are willing to take this on, knowing full well that this is work that they are not going to be able to do during the day. So, I say that because, you know, it does seem like there's a lot of money there, but yes, there's a, there's a pocket of $155,000 to go toward training for our teachers, and we need someone to manage it. So, it's a one-shot deal, it's a lot of work, and I highly recommend that we, we access this federal money that we've applied for and received and need to get the job done.
Clarifying question. The $28,000 in the stipend, does that come from the grant?
Yes.
So, it does? So, that's part of the grant?
Yes.
So, it's one, the downside of any grant is it's one-shot, and so we just want to get the best we can out of it, and, and then recognize it's not gonna be reoccurring in any way.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not one of those grants that require us to continue the programs we establish over the next five years out of our own pocket?
Good question. Absolutely not. It's, it's teacher training that can only now take place between now and June 30th.
Thank you.
Okay, I just like to put that Kevin was concerned about this. I don't think he had the same, the, the explanation that you just gave, so maybe we should make sure he-
I actually had the opportunity to talk to Kevin on my way here today, and he was totally fine once we had the conversation and realized we were gonna lose $155,000 unless we had somebody help us manage it on their own free time and compensated them for it.
Okay, so, all those in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And motion for 12.8, IT staff augmentation agreement, that's with the BTS, right?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just favor? Actually, just so I understand, basically what we're doing is we're subcontracting IT service. I, I hope that in this next budget process, we're looking at how best, you know, if there's a better way to do this. I mean, or, or in fact, is this the best way to be doing this?
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it both ways again.
Okay.
We budgeted this year for a person, and we were unsuccessful in finding a person. So, then we wound up going the route of subcontracting through Core BTS. But no, on, on July 1st, I would like to revisit and see if, if we can advertise in a different way. This, this, this provides us a couple of things. One, you don't use a civil service position for it, but yeah, we'll revisit it, absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor? Oppose? Okay. May I have a motion for 12.9? Day automation agreement, as listed in the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 12.10, improved settlement agreement with the Victory Lake, as listed in the agenda, please?
So moved?
Any discussion?
Just want to confirm, this is the agreement that we discussed in the executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And we're back at public participation. And anybody would, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved?
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We're back in public participation. Anybody would like to? Hi, Fran.
I'd like to thank you very much for your kind words about the cheerleading program. I know that we all appreciate that, and we've always felt support from the district. I'd also like to thank Mr. Heater for recognizing and acknowledging the title and stipend differences. I've coached for 17 years, and it's, I've always done it because I love cheerleading, but it's definitely nice to see that, now that New York State recognizes cheerleading as a sport, that I'm gonna be compensated, hopefully, for the job that I do. The cheerleaders are now required to follow all the same rules that all the other athletes, not that we haven't in the past, we have, we've had, we have always had to follow them. But the coaches are also required to take all of the same courses that any coach who gets their New York State coaching license has to follow. And those coaches, those classes were very extensive at the cost of the coaches ourselves. So, again, I'd like to thank you for trying to open up the negotiations with the teachers' union, and thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Motion to close public participation, please?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Fran, I just said, Fran, did they allow you a window to get, if you didn't have the courses to-
We have three here, so I've taken all the first ones.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I don't believe there are any other matters deemed necessary. And we'll go to 15.1, sub, board subcommittee reports. Are there any? We did have a tech, we had a tech meeting, and the topic was a tech plan, and also the hopeful $2.6 million money that the, as part of the bond that was voted on in the last election, on what to do with that, and how to spend it responsibly, and hopefully actually get it, right? We had, we, yes, we had a policy meeting. I don't know, you wanna? It was, yeah.
Motion to retention of students.
Right, right, but I was giving you a chance to talk instead of me doing all the talking. Yeah, okay. Eh, any other committee reports? Was there a facility steering committee?
You know, there was. Unfortunately, I don't seem to have my notes with me, so I don't know. Wayne, can you, anything? Uh, no, I was taking the facility steering. I know that we went over, updated on the sign, progress on the signs.
A month ago.
Yeah. Actually, it wasn't that long ago, it was-
Definitely was the signs, it was the update on, on all our projects and where we are.
Yeah.
Date with regards to the four phases, or the three phases of the Havilland Heat-
Capital project, yeah.
At that point, we spoke about trying to get pre-approval from the state, which we have, and so we talked a lot about the upcoming project, we talked about the, the project that was approved tonight with regards to technology. That's about it, yeah.
And membership.
And membership, yeah.
We're all, we're looking for, we're looking for members, looking for people interested in wanting to, you know, be part of the facility steering committee for the district, so. No particular skills necessary.
Couple weeks ago, we talked about the demand response program. I guess the application is still in progress, it might be in, went out. Talked about the natural gas service. Still don't have much information from Central Hudson about bringing the gas up 9G to our buildings. And Jill is still doing, just doing her daily routines, and we'll have a report, I guess, in, in December, maybe January.
Okay. I can also say that the Dutchess County School Board Association is holding interviews on Saturday for the executive director position. They have four good candidates, and it's actually kind of interesting, kind of exciting to think of maybe bringing some new blood in, somebody that might provide some, some new thought, new direction, so I'll keep you posted.
Because it is an effective group, because you get the perspective of what other districts are doing.
Well-
And you also get a perspective of what the state is, got lined up, and what other executives for lower Mid-Hudson are doing, 'cause there's a cross.
Well, and I think that was one of the benefits of going down to Terrytown the other night and having dinners, you're sitting with people who are from other areas, and you see what their association is doing. I mean, we're, our association is relatively small compared to what other, some of the others are, and the services that they provide to their member, member districts, and, you know, I think there's a lot of potential there. There was a lot of synergy, and I think as we all struggle with the same issues, there's a potential for that association to, to pay dividends, you know, for the mere $850 that we pay each year to be a member.
Okay. 15.2, upcoming meetings. Monday, November 24th, is a half-day for elementary students, afternoon and evening conferences. Tuesday, November 25th, half-day K-12 students with afternoon conferences. November 26th, my birthday, to November, November 28th, Dan's birthday. There is no school in honor of our birthdays, so that's good.
It's good to have a dream. Good to have a dream.
Thursday, December 11th, is the next Board of Education meeting, and it'll be at Havilland Middle School at 7 o'clock. We do have reason for another executive session. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person, persons and corporation?
So moved?
That's what it said, I'm just reading it, you know, I don't write this stuff. We have a second? Yeah. All in favor? Oh, nobody, oh, we didn't get a second?
Did he get a second? I don't know that he got a second.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gee.
All in favor? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Oppose? Executive session. I should've said this one, I wasn't reading.